Yeah.
Uh, it's so exciting. Schools getting ready. We got new faces in the crowd, so uh, that's always good for a good night. But uh, we'd like to call this meeting to order and the first thing that we have on our agenda is a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Let the roll call note that all members are present tonight. Item one C is the reading of board team commitments. Would anyone like to do that for me, Ms. Angie? Would you care to do that?
Yes, since I found them back on here.
Okay.
They're faster than me, Raina. Thank you. To improve our effectiveness, the board team Baroque Castle County commits to: review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements; continuously define and work toward long-term goals which serve all students of the district; make each decision based on facts and the best for all students; listen to each other and speak freely; work together, support each other, and not surprise one another; discuss board deliberations to point of mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information; support the majority's decision protecting board unity towards shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning; operate without personal or political agendas; respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully; delegate implementation to superintendent and education team; and to respectfully remind each other of these commitments.
Thank you, Ms. Angie. We uh, do not have this on the agenda, but uh, Ms. Carrie would like to make a few introductions.
Yes, yes. Um, we have two new members of our district staff that I would like to introduce this evening. Um, Ms. Jessica Willis has been hired as our coordinator of teaching and learning, so we're very excited to have Ms. Jessica with us and welcome her to the, to the Rocket family. And also, we would like to welcome Ms. Rebecca Hubbard, who is, um, has just been recently hired as our director of special ed. So both of these ladies will be presenting a department report later this evening, so you'll, you'll get to interact with them some more, but we're excited to have them and blessed that they're part of our family now.
Wonderful.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Absolutely. Glad to have you.
Excited to see your, your ideas come, come full round and share with us. Uh, on the agenda, the number three, we have our community showcase, and this is where CMTA is going to talk about our energy project update. Wherever you want to go. Where do you want to go? Oh, I'm sorry, before I do that, we do need to adopt the agenda. So you are next though, okay? But before we adopt this agenda, we need to make a couple of changes. The first thing, uh, that I'd like to point out, our public comment, number nine, uh, to save our, uh, visitors from having to stay to midnight, we hope it's not midnight, but we're going to, we would like to move that and to, up to after operations and actions. Is that okay? Okay? And the other thing that we need to do is, um, Ms. Carrie has got her personal growth plan that she would like to present to us tonight, and it's something that we will review, and this is something to, do we vote on this for you, Ms. Carrie?
Yes.
And it needs to be voted on. So with that addition, that would be five J. Is that good for everyone?
Yes.
So we will make those changes. With those changes, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. All right. No, we're just going to do public comment after operations and actions.
Okay.
So we'll let Ryan, yes.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm sorry. You can go ahead, yes.
Uh, I'm excited to be here to present the, the progress that we've made so far with the, uh, guaranteed energy savings, uh, project that we're doing here in the district. Again, very thankful for the district and, and actually, I want to say something else about this, just the staff at all the schools, every school that we've been in, the staff has been wonderful. Uh, been dealing with our contractors great, and everything is just really, really going along very smoothly. I just wanted to, uh, I can talk about this the rest of the night, I know you've got plenty to talk about, so I'll kind of try to hustle through, but, um, gonna talk about just the five things that we've got, uh, on the, the agenda, what we've been doing. Uh, the first one is the lighting upgrades. We started at the middle school, we, we started about, uh, the nineteenth of July, uh, working at the middle school. We have that building, uh, looking very good. We've added occupancy sensors throughout the building. That, uh, a building's only unique in the fact that they didn't have light switches. They would have to go each day to the circuit breakers and turn them on, turn them off, and so that was something that we implemented, and I think that's working out very well. Again, each, anyone that we've talked to at the building has been very pleased with what, uh, what we've done so far. Uh, the gym, uh, we have had some challenges at the gym. I don't know if anybody has, uh, one of the things that has kind of stymied us, that, uh, that dark ceiling has been something that we were, uh, unable to really, uh, duplicate in a calculation, a lighting calculation. So we were originally going to be taking out sixteen of the original lights, uh, and because we didn't feel like we needed them with the new LED, uh, we are going to be adding eight of those back in because we didn't, we didn't really like the light levels that we had at the floor. So, uh, again, those are, uh, that's a panoramic on the, the right there. A lot of those pendant lights up around the, uh, as I understand, that maybe some of those haven't been operating, operating in about a decade. So, uh, those are back in action again, so, uh, but we will be going back to the gym, uh, next week, I believe, to finish that up. Uh, Mount Vernon Elementary School, um, again, just a lot of good comments from the staff there about what, uh, what a difference the LED has made. Uh, we've even a, been able to de-lamp there. We've been able to take some of the, the, the tubes out of the fixtures and still, uh, very greatly improve, uh, the lighting at that, uh, facility. Uh, we also have been working at Roundstone, actually got that complete this afternoon, uh, and so, uh, again, those are a couple of shots there. So just as an, uh, kind of an update on where we're at, the middle school is complete, that's the gym, the academy, we were still, we were mobilized, uh, at the middle school campus, and we went ahead and knocked out the academy. Uh, Mount Vernon is complete, Roundstone is, was in progress today. I did find out on the way down here that they were kind of demobilizing, heading over to Broadhead. So that seventy percent is actually a bit higher than that at, at present. So, uh, feel like, uh, Blanton Electric has done a very, very good job for us here in the district. They have really knocked out a, a lot of lights, uh, and as you can see here, what we have next, uh, Broadhead, the, uh, ATC sightlights, the central office teaching learnings, the next time you have one of these, it'll be under LED, uh, and the bus garage in the athletic building. So we intend to have, of course, all of the school buildings, uh, done before school starts, uh, and then, as we have been talking about all along, uh, working with the district to get these other, uh, support buildings done, perhaps during school or after hours, whichever works best for, uh, for you all. I did want to take, uh, show a picture of the bulb crusher. Uh, we are, uh, taking care of everything in a, uh, environmentally friendly manner. All of that has to be recycled, and it's, it's done. All the tubes are, uh, destroyed with the bulb crusher and all that is recycled, as well as the ballast. Some of the ballast that came out of the academy were original, uh, so those are nineteen sixty-eight ballots that have PCBs in it, and so they have to be recycled in a, a very appropriate way. Just want to let you know that that's being done.
What is the very appropriate one?
Well, they are sent, there's, I think there's two places in the United States that take care of PCBs anymore, and Blanton Electric will be shipping those to them for them to, to take care of. I think they're frozen. Uh, I think the recycling process of that is that they're frozen and then somehow destroyed. All right, the next, uh, next thing we've been working on is the solar at the high school. And again, on the left is where we had shown you what the array was going to look like. On the top of the gym roof, uh, that is, uh, uh, an actual, um, that's there on the roof. Uh, then we've got two other pictures of how that, uh, how they look, and then, uh, we're going to show you drone footage here in just a minute. But what, so far, we've got the arrays installed, both of them. Uh, the mechanical room work is in progress. We're installing the inverters and the conduit. Next week, we're going to be trying to install the TV monitor in the foyer. But this time, I'd like to show, we've got about a minute worth of drone footage, uh, of actually what, uh, what it's looking like. That assembly, believe it or not, all of that is in place because of those blocks. Those are called ballast blocks. Those, that's what actually holds the, uh, the tray that holds the, the solar panel in place. Bad thing is, you can't see it from the road. Uh, the parapet wall, even coming in from, uh, I guess from the one fifty, uh, it's, you can't get high enough to see the roof, so that was kind of a bummer. Hopefully, that will be out of sight and out of mind, and just be working away for years to come, producing electricity for the school. We do intend, uh, thank you, we can go back to the. We do intend, thank you, we can go back to the presentation. Empower Solar is what's, the other company that's installing that for us. They do intend to have that operational before school starts. We're very hopeful that we can get that done. The next thing I want to talk about is the bipolar ionization install. Again, this is something we're doing throughout the district. Of course, as you know, just wanted to show you a few shots of what those look like at Mount Vernon. They installed them in the fan inlets. Of course, that's what brings the ions into the classroom. And then, the one on Roundstone is a little bit harder to see, but again, it's on the fan inlet of those console units that are in the classrooms. These are a couple of shots at the high school. One is a horizontal unit above the classroom, and this, the one on the right. Sometimes, the units are large enough to require two devices in them, and that's where you see two in that unit. So, just a recap on that. Mount Vernon is complete, we installed sixty-eight. The high school's complete, one hundred and fifty devices. Roundstone was in progress as of about noon today, thirty of sixty-four were installed. Next up is Broadhead and the middle school. Obviously, we're intent on having all of these installed in the school buildings before school starts. But as of today, we had about two hundred and forty-eight of the four hundred and fifty-six devices, about fifty-four percent. That doesn't sound that great at present, but Mount Vernon and the high school are definitely the most difficult buildings. They're the ones that are above the ceiling, it took someone on a ladder up and down and up and down. Broadhead will go very quickly because all the units are on mezzanine. Same for the ATC, all the units on the, the middle school is on the roof, the academy's on the roof. All those will go very, very quick. So, I feel like that we should not have any trouble accomplishing that goal, having them done, installed before school starts. Archer, Archer Air Conditioning is doing the install, they're doing a great job as well, of course. We are doing some retro commissioning at the high school. We've been doing this since about the end of June. Preston, which has been here, I think he's been at the board meeting before, he is supporting me on this project. He nearly every day is looking at that school, trying to figure out ways in which we can tune it up and try to make it run a little bit better. So, we've been doing some building scheduling, set point adjustments. We've been tweaking the differential pressure sensor. And I know, some of, I could talk about this all night, but I know you don't want to, the glaze over happens here. But what I wanted to show you is that point number three is in relationship to the picture on the right-hand side. That is a variable frequency drive which runs a pump, the pumps that serve the entire building. They have been operating at almost a hundred percent, a hundred percent of the time, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. At our, changing up some sensors out into the loop and that sort of thing, we have now running it at sixty-point-seven percent. That's a thirty horsepower motor, running at six-point-four-eight horsepower. So, an incredible savings on that. And we're going to be, we're already starting to track the bills on that school. And we'll hopefully be able to show you some interesting and hopefully some very good information maybe the next month that we're here. Resolving some communication errors in the building. Primary pumps now operating in a lead-lag arrangement. Heat pumps with outside air dampers, optimizing the sequence. Again, we're still doing a lot of things, we're still in progress. Boiler and fluid cooler optimization, once we get into the heating season, we'll try to be working on making sure that the boiler only is operating when it needs to be operating. And then, make a bear sequencing. And then, lastly, the fluid cooler changeout at Mount Vernon, we are, I know we've sort of been focusing on all the things we've been talking about. But next week, we're going to be meeting onsite with the contractors. LED contracting is going to be the mechanical contractor that's going to be doing the work. But the work is scheduled to be done over fall break. I have nine-thirty, I think that's, I think maybe Friday of that week before fall break, maybe an off day or something. So, we're going to try to take as much of that time as we can to bring this unit down and take it out of the building and bring a new one in. So, the new one is scheduled to ship nine-two, so we should not have any trouble meeting that goal for everything. I think everybody, Trent certainly is going to be feeling, able to sleep a lot better knowing that that's new. And won't, will be able to last throughout the rest of our project here, of course. So, that's all that I have. Anybody have any questions about what we, what we're doing or?
What if it does not arrive on nine-two?
We're not even going to talk about that. That's why we tried very hard to get it released quickly. Nine-two should be no problem, I mean, that gives us three weeks before we really need it. And we've talked to the principal and assistant principal, we're going to just try to sit it on the parking lot, you know, have it out there. And so, we're ready to have it when we need it. And that also is what we're going to be doing, you know, in this eight-seventeen meeting. And we're going to be talking about the contractors, to where we can go ahead and maybe be procuring the heat pumps and some of the things for next year. One of the things that we have learned, and it's just kind of strange across the board, I guess, our economy, the supply chains have just really been disrupted. And it's affected everything, affected HVAC equipment and everything that we all deal with. Even down to ketchup packets at restaurants, it's kind of strange. But anyway, the, so we're going to talk to them about going ahead and releasing them, getting the heat pumps sent to their shops, so that they'll have them just the day after school's out, that we can go ahead and start working next summer. Trying to, trying to get a plan.
I'm very familiar with Mount Vernon Elementary, but where is this exactly located? I mean, when you said you were going to be taking it in the building, what, where will you be taking it in at? I mean?
Yeah, it will come out, actually, it's in the mechanical room, out back.
Okay, so out back.
Out, kind of in the side of the back. And the old unit-
Is that word that's that?
Right, just on, just on the side of the work line. And so, the old unit's got to come out the roof hole, and the new unit has to go back in the roof hole. It's going to be a challenging, they'll use that whole week for them to put that back together.
Thank you.
I was able to go to Mount Vernon and Mr. Coffey showed me around before I came to the board meeting. And the lights were awesome. And just being able to walk into the gym and the sensors come on and, you know, the lights come on without them, it seemed like it was more safety as well as the lighting. He had talked about how they had to really try to wiggle the lights sometimes to even get some of them on. So, the staff and, you know, they were very pleased, excited.
Yeah, we have added occupancy sensors to all the gyms in the district. That's something that's sort of one of our, kind of our normal designs. So, that any of the doors that you come in, you'll be able to immediately turn on all the lights. And what you'll see about LED is when they come on, they're on. I mean, it's not, mostly gym lights have to warm up. And so, that's why you just keep them on. And that's, of course, negative for a lot of different ways. So, it is good for them to be able to go off and come on very quickly.
So, no one's going to be going and hiding in the gym.
It's going to be tough to hide.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Your conversation about Mount Vernon and the other school, the heat pumps there, being able to get to those, I understand exactly what you're talking about. I mean, it's a chore to work with in the beginning, and I'm sure it's a real chore or has been a chore for your work there. Your schedule, looking at nine-two, I think, Angie, that would be the backup plan. That's nothing in advance that we can, we, being you, can ensure that that gets there in time.
That is correct, yes. Yeah, I won't be, won't be sleeping good until it's there in the parking lot.
Brian, I want to take just a second and thank you and everyone that works for CMTA. I know Trent has just been so pleased with the relationship you all have had and how smooth everything's going. And I just want to take just a moment to thank you, thank everybody from CMTA. It's been a great project so far, and it's been, you know, it's been a pleasure to work with everyone in your company. Thank you.
I'm glad that Trent was able to take a vacation.
Yes, he needed a little break. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Number four on our agenda is operations and actions. Does anyone have any question? No questions? No questions, I need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, thank you.
All in favor? Okay, at this time, we are going to have our public conversation. We have some members of our public that's here. And I just want to say that it always, it's always a blessing to see parents come in and be advocates for your children. It's a blessing to me as a mother, not just as a board member, because I am my daughter's voice while she's young. And it is my place to keep her protected at all times, all of my girls. But with that being said, Ms. Rochelle, would you like to go ahead and?
I've actually got some copies that I've made to give you all, whoever's wondering about. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I'm going to try to get this out quickly.
Happy to have you.
So, the main purpose of me being here was just to support universal masking in schools. And I know that the governor just mandated that. So, I'm just going to skip over a lot of what I was saying and just talk about a personal story of someone that I know that I think is still important for us to hear. I think there's some popular misconceptions. I've heard about young people and COVID, that it's easier on them or they aren't affected, or if they're asymptomatic or have a mild case, they won't have long-term consequences. I would like to close what I was intending on saying about, with her written experience about COVID-nineteen at the age of twenty-three. Her case has been covered by UK Healthcare and the UK College of Medicine with her neurologist explaining how encephalitis can come after COVID. Last week, there was an article published by UK Healthcare about a six-year-old child in Somerset who had almost an identical case to Shelby's. So, I'd just like to tell Shelby's story. This is her words. My name is Shelby Ponder McClure. I am twenty-five, I'm a twenty-fifteen graduate of Rock Castle County Schools and soon to be graduate of UK Law School. I could not have received a more well-rounded education anywhere else in the world, and I hope you consider my experience with COVID in deciding the best way to give students an education like mine in these uncertain times. I was diagnosed with post-COVID encephalitis last fall, which is brain swelling caused by COVID. I have three lesions in my brain that are still healing one year later, where the virus ate the protective coating off of my nerves. Last summer, I wasn't masking before the mandate. Whether or not that would have prevented what happened to me, no one can know. But there is very little I wouldn't trade to go back and mask any chance whatsoever of not having done your what I did. I have no recollection of nearly fifteen days of my life outside of paralyzing fear and hallucinations, which I remember vividly as images forever burned into my bedroom walls. Those are two things I will never forget for as long as I live. My mother could not get my fever to break for two solid weeks, reaching a hundred and three-point-nine degrees at one point. I thought I was in the clear when it finally broke, but the worst had just begun. Once my fever broke, I was completely unable to fall asleep. My entire vision field started shaking. It looked as if the world was moving left to right and up and down simultaneously and constantly for about two more weeks. I was finally admitted to the hospital once the doctors realized something was very wrong. After MRI, they told me I had extensive brain swelling in three different parts of my brain, including around my optic nerve. The only thing to do was wait for it to heal and hope that it actually would. After my hospital stay, I could not sleep. Nearly a month went by where I was getting an hour of sleep a night at most. And at my worst, I went over a week with absolutely zero sleep. After trips back to the ER to try and get help, my neurologist discovered the horrifying reason. COVID had eroded the protective coating of nerves in the front part of my brain responsible for making melatonin and in my brain receptor that receives melatonin, thus making it impossible to put myself to sleep. From the end of August through February, when my brain had mostly healed, I was on a strict medicine regimen, four different medicines just for my brain to be able to shift into sleep mode. I'm not sure if it's possible for me to convey to you the level of anxiety and fear that COVID-nineteen caused me. It was absolutely debilitating and sucked the life out of me. I truly had no desire to live any longer by the time September rolled around. Thankfully, my life has returned to normal and I feel one-hundred percent recovered, even though the three tiny white spots that represent what remains of months upon months of torture may never disappear from my brain skins. Still, I am one of the fortunate ones. All of this very likely would have been avoided if I had just understood the importance of wearing a mask before the mask mandate took place. That is and always will be the greatest regret of my life. My story is not rare. Please do not write this off as an exception to the rule. Anywhere from thirteen to twenty-five percent of COVID survivors will have severe neurological involvement, and upwards of eighty percent have some neurological involvement. Please take any action you can to limit the likelihood of our children having to experience anything like I did. We all understand it's not a guaranteed safeguard. It's the only one we have for our children who like the ability to make their own decisions. There is no risk of harm in wearing a mask, absolutely none. But I speak from agonizing experience when I tell you there's a devastating risk in not wearing one. And I just want to thank you guys for your time, and I'm glad that the governor mandated this. And I feel much more comfortable sending my child back to school now, because he was really anxious. And as a parent, I just want him to feel safe. I'm really glad that that's happened, and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for reading Shelby's story also. I know Shelby, and she's such an impressive young lady. And when she was going through this struggle, it was heart-wrenching for I know all of her family and friends. Ms. Paula?
I'm, first of all, I want to thank all of you guys for hearing all of us and hearing. And I'm so happy to know that we all have a voice, no matter what it is. And I think that we can all agree that every single one of us are in this room because we all care about our kids and about their safety in and outside of the school. So, I am speaking because I wanted to acknowledge that Rock Castle had gave the parents the choice this year to say what we feel like is the best choice for our kids concerning masks. And to speak from a little personal from that, we done all of the masks last year. My dad had a massive heart attack in the middle, so I was very, very cautious. I didn't want to go anywhere to bring back anything on him. So, I know every, last year was just rough for everyone. You didn't know what was right and what was wrong from day to day. And so, in the middle of that, I kept getting incredibly sick with strep throat. And I could not understand why I've not had it my whole life. And then, all of a sudden, as an adult, I was keeping it constantly. And after the fifth time of being diagnosed with strep throat and antibiotics, and it wasn't, it was getting rid of it, but it kept coming back. And then, I was exempted from my doctor, who let me know they done a strep test in my throat and come to find out that I have a bacteria that is kind of like someone that has, you know, we all have the virus for warts, but it takes certain things to, you know, in the environment to activate that. It was the same thing with that bacteria, that the mask was actually what was causing, because with my mouth being covered and my nose being covered, it caused it to breathe. And so, when I got exempt from it, I was like, are you kidding? Like, I thought this was keeping me, but come to find out for me personally, it was keeping me sick. So, as soon as I was able to be exempt, and then I quit wearing the mask unless I, you know, had to going into a doctor's office or what have you for a small amount of time, I thank God I have not had strep throat one time since then. For my children, my, I have my three children with me today, because they go wherever mommy goes, pretty much. And my oldest, he's thirteen, he had non-stop nosebleeds last year. He's not someone that has nosebleeds, but come to find out, it's just part of him wearing a mask. It was drawing his sinuses out. And so, every single week, he was coming home and I was having to bleach his shirts because he had a nosebleed at school. Likewise, my nine-year-old was also dealing with sore throats. And since we've not had to wear our mask, then none of us have faced any of these things. My heart goes out to the people who have experienced COVID and have extremely bad, you know, circumstances with it or have lost their life. It, I do believe the virus is real, I believe it's absolutely out there, and it can wreak havoc. But I also believe that we should have a choice to be able to say whether or not that, which is best for our, you know, for us. And so, for me, as a parent, I was so thankful. And so for me, as a parent, I was so thankful that Rockcastle was one of the communities that said, okay, there is no right or wrong right now, because every day there's something new and we're just trying to do our best. And I prayed for all y'all last year, because I was like, Lord, they are against the wall. And who knows, you know, come day or tomorrow, what's gonna come out and what we're gonna have to deal with. And we don't know the long term of anything. So I'm just praying that we all just continue making what we feel like is best. And the beautiful thing is that for me and for my babies, you gave me the opportunity to say, okay, you know what, you're their mother. And you know what they experienced, and you know the costs, or you know the, you know, the, that word I can't think of, you know, the, you know, probability of what they could or couldn't come down with. And we're gonna let you make the choice of what you feel like is best for your child this year. So I just wanted to give our personal, talk about what we experienced last year and just thank you for giving moms a voice right now, because that means a lot as parents to be able to say what I feel like is best for my child. And it's not one size fits all, and I understand you guys have a rough job with that. So I commend you for everything that y'all have done. Thank you.
Girl, I do it every day. I'm like, Lord, I was praying on my way here.
Thank you so much. Mr. Smith?
I'm not sure if you'll let me do an experiment today, but.
Mom's just under five minutes.
Okay. I'm a little more technical than that. So I'm gonna start off the masks work, don't work. Okay, so my name is Jason Smith. I'm retired from the Army, medical retired from, uh, medical retired from federal law enforcement, self-retired from being an electrician. With that, when I started out in regular Army and in National Guard, I took it upon myself to go to school. So I have one hundred forty-three credit hours, associate supply side. So basically what I'm saying is I try to get the most knowledge possible and get out the titles. Okay, so here goes. So when I was in Iraq, my job was to, I was the NCOI CEO. I was a non-commissioned officer in charge of all the Iraq's personnel detail for the command leader, leaving the element, I had to make sure they were safe at all times, right? So one of the things we had to do was make sure if something happened, you know, mask and all that stuff. Even in Iraq, the, the pollution was so bad that masks still didn't work. Our masks didn't work in Iraq. Okay, so we stopped using them. We put them on, ended up, like, put them away. Okay, so, so saying that, going back to how the masks work and don't work, if, even if you do get, say, a N95 mask, okay. The N95 mask can protect you from small particles. The coronavirus itself is smaller than the particles it can protect you from. But the coronavirus will attach itself to larger things, so it can stop it most part. However, an N95 mask isn't a hundred percent. And it has to be specially fitted for that person and placed in, you know, the person has access to the door. And the filter has to be clean, therefore, get, get into the cloth. Okay, cloth mask, there's no way hu, there's no way possible it can possibly stop coronavirus. I don't care what you say, I don't really care, really. Because a cloth mask, like right now, you can see, you can see a hose in a cloth mask yourself with your eyes. Therefore, it's four hundred to sixteen thousand times larger than that of, uh, that will stop from N95 mask. So the mask itself can't work no matter what. And I have an experiment to prove that, if you want to let me do that. So anyway, like I said, even in Iraq, when, when stuff was getting bad, we didn't use our masks, because they just didn't work. Never the best mask you could possibly have, so. Okay, so anyway. My experiment is, is super simple. Basically, you take any mask, put on a person, take hairspray, spray hairspray, right? Because if it can stop, if it, if it can't stop hairspray, there's no way you can ever stop something this small. So if you can smell the hairspray, your mask don't work. If you feel, if you feel the sickness behind your mask, your mask don't work. So that's all you have to do, super simple. Another thing, since the masks were mandated, I had a couple of questions. Like, we, we were wearing masks for so long, if we had to, say, in Iraq or whatever, and then the filters had to be changed. Well, how about our kids at school? Do they wear the mask all day long? Do they change them out? Do they have like six of them? They keep changing them out and they'll take those six home and get them washed? Because if not, then any, anything dirty and filthy basically draws and it makes everything stay there. It's like in the Army, I learned that, uh, when I first got out as a scout. So I stayed up in the woods for thirty days without having to shower or anything. My clothes would actually stand up on their own. Well, we found out that the longer the, the dirtier your gun, it don't matter how hot it was during the day, you would freeze when it dropped twenty degrees in the mountains, because your stuff was, was dirty. Same with the mask, it has to be clean. So I was wondering, you know, what are we gonna do about that? If a child, child gets sick and sneezes inside their mask? Same thing with the, same thing with the hairspray. Like, spray the hairspray on the inside of the mask, it stays there, it's sticky, just like, it's not wet, and it still comes out. So therefore, a mask doesn't work. So to me, it may, I, I hope it's not another failed year like last year. Last year was horrible for my kids. My straight A students, when, you know, when I was a senior, so now she's in college, so. So anyway, I was just wanting to tell you that, to me, masks don't work. All they do is stop people from communicating. It's, it's terrible. Kids gotta sit there in their own field all day long. It's bad. So hopefully, since we gotta wear the mask apparently, hopefully we can somehow get a method of cleaning mask, have more than one per child, because not everybody can just buy, keep buying masks. That's all I got, so.
Mr. Smith, to answer your question, I'm not for sure exactly what our policies are, what, what our teachers are doing in the classroom. Like you, I have a concern for the smaller children. I have, one of my closest friends teaches first grade, and you know, small children have a tendency to not be as clean, you know, when they sneeze and stuff. So I, I often, and I think that maybe that's something that, as parents, I'm talking as a parent here, that we need to inquire of the teachers that our students have. Need to ask them, you know, if my child does this, can you provide? And I know that we have things, we have things available for the teachers to provide, but I think that as parents, we have the right to talk to our teachers and to ask them, if my child does this, can you help with that? And that's about the best, best thing that I can say that I would encourage you or anybody that is concerned about that.
And last year, we also provided two masks per student. So that way, so my child wore mask today, they could wash that one tonight, and they had a clean one for the next day, and just alternating.
But there again, like, a surgeon changes it every thirty minutes, if not more, no matter what. And it's, it's some way, gone, every touch again. Kids don't get that. Plus, like, if, if a teacher has always, always come around and check all their masks, that's taking all kinds of time away from actually learning. It gets kind of crazy here and there, you know.
Ms. Angie, I will, will follow up on what you just said. We have just placed an order that we will be able to provide two masks per student again. And then we also have disposable mask on hand that will be in classrooms and on our school buses. So if students need an additional disposable mask, we'll have those available, so.
And going back to the surgical thing, I, I do know that they did that. But I think Angie, would that be when they were creating a sterile field?
It could be, yes.
Every thirty minutes?
And masks aren't.
And I understand that, but then there again, the more things are dirty, it does not, it has no effect. So I mean, you're literally making a wall of nastiness, and then you're breathing outside, the sides and straight up. And there again, since this is so small, the size of it, that's, so literally, it's impossible to stop that. Like, right now, you can see, that's impossible. It has to be literally sealed to your face. And even then, it's super hard to do it, so, just saying.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
And I got the experiment.
Do you still have, you said you had, it's time to graduate, what is, what are the?
My daughter will be going into sixth grade.
Sixth grade?
And my other daughter just graduated, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
And I want to say thanks to all three of you. I think I certainly appreciate the different views, because I think that matches what we're dealing with. No one size fits all. And with your last comments there, I would like to think, and I'm confident this is the case, that all teachers, all principals are willing to work with you and your children's specific needs. Yours with the story that you had, whatever that may be, two masks, disposable mask, because we have some ESSER funds, and I, we're not gonna spend it all on that, but we have spent a lot, spent a lot on masks, but that's something that we can accommodate.
I have my mask up here. I love this to wear, I don't wear it anywhere.
And I want to echo that, thank you all for coming. Um, it, it's just, it's vital to us. I, I know to me as superintendent, and I can speak for our board members, that, that we exist, we're here for service, and we serve you as our, as our families and our community, and we serve, serve our children. And, and we need to hear your opinions, and we need, and, and we appreciate that. We appreciate you taking the time to come and talk to us and join us. We invite you to come back. We, you know, we always encourage parents to participate in our board meetings, and just really, really appreciate that. And, and seeing, as soon as your children walk in, that was my first comment to Ms. Angie. That's a blessing to see smiling faces, so thank you so much for coming.
It takes a lot of courage, by the way, to stand up, it takes a lot of courage, so, yeah, you know, we can.
That was my first class in college, perfectly, I hated it.
We cannot, we can, you know, stand behind a computer all day long and say things, but it takes, it takes a lot of courage.
A thousand pieces in Iraq, but not, you know.
And you know that the beautiful thing about this, if you want to find beauty in it, is regardless if you are in favor of wearing a mask, or if you're not in favor of a mask, I do believe with my whole heart that everyone in this room is still sold out for public education and what it means to our students and what we can do for our kids. And we will be stronger when we are together than we will ever be being separated. So I still think, even with this, I'm so confident that we're going to start this school year out. My daughter, I can speak for her because she's mine, okay? She is so excited to get back in a school building. With bright lights, it's gonna be even better, so, so thank you, parents. I, it, it's an honor for me to know that we have parents that care as much as you all have, that you're willing to do this. And I, I just wish all of your children the best, so, thank you so much. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is, five eight, is review and approve to move forward with the tax hearing and the advertising.
First before that, Ms. Angie, we need to back up just a little bit, where it's tax rate discussion with Compass Financial.
Okay, so that's gonna be before?
Yes, they're gonna discuss that before.
Okay, I see, I see. So we're going?
Yes, and before we do that, I was just gonna, to discuss and set the stage for that just a little bit before Mr. Anthony and Mr. Keith present to us. I had been discussing through email with you all about the use of our ESSER funds, and, and we all know and have had some preliminary discussions about the need for a new middle school. And I just wanted, before we had that tax discussion, wanted Mr. Brandon, who's gonna pull this up, just some facts about our middle school for, for everyone and, and those watching on YouTube. Oh, you're fine. Rockcastle County Middle School was built in nineteen seventy-two. Of course, it was built before current building codes. So it is soon to be fifty year, fifty years old. It is categorized as an urgent need school currently. In the state ranking, it is ranked number thirty-three of the worst schools in the, in the state of Kentucky. And we have done some projected costs, not ourselves, but putting in some information into a state database. And the projected cost to renovate the building with the urgent high and medium actions would be seventeen million dollars. The projected cost for replacing the current Rockcastle County Middle School is thirty million dollars. So I just wanted you all to have that background before we, we move forward in discussing our tax rates and knowing and having that information of this is the X amount of money it would cost to renovate versus this is the cost that it would, that it's projected for us to completely rebuild the Rockcastle County Middle School. And it's just like in thinking about our home construction and, and our homes, is, are we gonna be better served to put our money towards a new building? Or are we gonna be better served to put our money into a fifty-year-old building? So just some, some information for you about that. And Mr. Brandon, if you want to move forward to the next, these are just some pictures that I actually asked Mr. Phillips if he would snap a few things for us. You just can see the age of, of that building and, and what we're dealing with. I mean, anytime you have a fifty-year-old school building, you know, it's time and there's issues. And, and we have issues with the electrical systems and asbestos and, and other things that are failing. And it's, and I want to be the first to say, Rockcastle County Schools has done a phenomenal job of maintaining that building. I mean, it's fifty years old, and, and to the naked eye, when you first walk in, it's gorgeous. It's a beautiful building, and you don't see all of this behind-the-scenes issues. And I know Mr. Rappert could probably speak more to that as, as the principal, as the former principal, but, you know, our, our maintenance staff, our custodial staff, they've done phenomenal of, of upkeeping this building. But we've reached a point now that we, as a, as you as a board and as a school district, we need to decide what direction we want to move forward. So just wanted to share that with you before Mr. Anthony and Mr. Keith present to us.
All right. It'd be like everybody else, it'd be all.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you again for the opportunity. Yeah, I, I think every time I visit with this board, it's been during the pandemic. And again, you have utmost respect for the decisions that you make as a board and superintendent, as a board member and a superintendent of the district. I mean, this, this whole time is, is crazy times. And it's happening here, and it's happening in Northern Kentucky where I live, and Western Kentucky where I'm from, and we're, we're seeing it everywhere. So again, you have our respect and sincere appreciation for the work that you do. Driving down with interstate problems, I've got a better sincere appreciation for the road system in, in Rockcastle County. I think I'd know where to check some roads if it was snowing, if I was living down here. We came through Hurricane's Road, off of Twenty-Five, and we went by Lindbergh Lake. And as Mr. Rempro Creek Road, we were on too. So we, we, we hit the roads. I think I had a pretty good idea there, Mr. Hammond, if I had to make a call, at least on the Northeast County, it's a part of the county anyway, so. It was a good trip. We, we still made it in time, so I mean, that's my issue, I like to be on time, so. But, but anyway, just, Keith is gonna do most of the presentation. I, I know that in the times that we've been down here, before the board hired us, when we met with, with Sweet and with Ballinger, you know, talking about the facilities and the need for the middle school, she just shared some of that with you. So that's been something that's been on the forefront of our discussion. And the question being is, is that, you know, what can we do as financial advisors to help get you in that position to look at your existing capacity and look at ways to help you increase that capacity? One of the things that we do is we analyze tax rates for our clients, and we've done that for several this year. And the examples that Keith is going to go through will give you some ideas of some different options, how you can increase your revenue in a way to maybe utilize and increase that. Because the issue being is, is that, one, you're on urgent needs, and because you don't have as nickels or revenue out there that's required to get that money, you're not eligible for that money, so that makes it difficult. So we're gonna show you some things tonight to give you some options to look at, and I think Miss Ballinger's gonna go from there, so. Since you can't see, you want me to work these?
Yeah, I can work it. I'll have my glasses and my other cover. So I can see here in front of me. Yeah, thank you. And obviously, I, I like math, and we got a lot of math on here, so please feel free to interrupt me if there's some questions or something doesn't, doesn't try to make, or doesn't quite make sense. We, we try to kind of simplify, but as Anthony mentioned, we're trying to really just lay out some options for you and, you know, give you an idea of what those options mean in terms of your different buckets of money. So when it comes to your basic tax rate, you have two essential buckets. You have your general fund, which goes to the operational side, and then you have the building fund, which is predominantly supporting of your debt service and your facilities improvements. And so you're, you're kind of restricted, but it gets into some interesting conversations around tax rate time, because, you know, depending on how, how you want to set up your nickel portion, you know, kind of can impact the general fund portion of your tax rate. And so we wanted to kind of try to quantify that and illustrate to you based upon your current situation. So if you look at this first slide, you can see kind of in the left-hand side, we're showing you what your actual tax rates were, both for the real and personal property last fiscal year, which was forty-two eighty. You can see that you have one building fund nickel. And that's to Anthony's point that for the urgent needs, it's typically required that you have at least two, two building fund nickels, so. And then, so kind of going down below that, you can see we've broken out the estimates of your, your tax revenues based upon those rates. And you can see the estimates, and this is actual, based upon actual collection rates, not what KDE kind of gives you a gross number. What we're trying to do is get to the real bottom line or the real impact of the district. And you can see with those, those dollars. And you can see what those, those dollars generate. And those dollars are, are generated off of the, the historical property assessments that you can see below there, and you can see kind of your trends in that aspect. But that is kind of what we're looking at, the baseline, right? So, what was, what was this last, last year? Now, we're trying to look forward to the current year. And so, uh, you have, obviously, I think everyone's probably fairly familiar with the compensating rate and the four percent, right? So, those are the typical starting points for this discussion. Uh, and you can see the compensating rate, uh, for this year, based upon the new twenty-twenty-two assessments, which are down below in the right-hand corner, are forty-one twenty and forty-one fifty. And so, when you apply, uh, the same basic, uh, you know, uh, collection rate to that, you can see that basically generates the same amount of money, uh, that you currently have. It's, it's slightly higher due to the new property in the district and so, and the, and the formulas. But essentially, that's the same. So, then you look at the four percent rate, right, and that's supposed to generate four percent in additional revenue. And you can see that generates about a hundred thousand dollars more to the general fund. So, uh, that's kind of the, the starting point for the tax rate discussion. And then, as we get into, you know, do you wanna look at other options for addressing your middle school need? Then, then we're talking about the recallable nickel as a potential. And so, when you think about the recallable nickel, most folks think of it as you just tack it on to your, your four percent rate and increase it by the nickel equivalent. And so, the nickel equivalent is adjusted for those collections, but in your case, it's five point eight cents. Okay, so, out here kind of in the right-hand side, we've looked at the scenario here of adding the nickel equivalent on top of the four percent rate. So, you can see the rate will go from four point four, excuse me, I can't speak, forty-two eighty to forty-eight sixty. And so, the important thing here is what does that do to your different buckets of, of revenues? And you can see, uh, it actually slightly decreases, uh, when compared to the general fund four percent rate. And that's because of the way we apply the nickel to the motor vehicles and, and real property, but it's essentially the same. But you've doubled your building fund number. And so, that building fund number comp is, is your local portion as well as the, the potential for state equalization of that nickel, which we'll get into a little bit. But that's, that's a really big number in your loss case. Uh, and so, you can see under this scenario, the total revenues, uh, you know, versus twenty-twenty-one actually increase, uh, you know, as well. So, this is, this scenario here is an increase to the general fund as well as an increase to the building fund. So, I guess before I go into, we got a couple more scenarios. I just wanna make sure that I didn't gloss over any too quickly there. You got any specific questions? If that makes sense, then we'll go into the second option. So, this is all identical, but under this scenario, we're basically saying, well, again, we don't necessarily wanna tack the entire nickel equivalent. So, this scenario assumes that you would increase the rate by just half of that, or two point nine cents. And so, you can see in the right-hand column, it's forty-five seventy, which is lower than the last scenario. And you can see here, if you look down there in the box in the red, you know, your building fund increases by the same amount of a nickel. So, you still get the benefit of that, but because you're not absorbing that entirety in the tax rate, right, the district is absorbing a portion of that, uh, it actually impacts the general fund by about eighty-five thousand, you know, based upon our estimates. So, when, when we were trying to lay this out in different scenarios to kind of get the discussion in terms of what made the most sense, kind of we're just starting with, you know, here, here's what a lot of people think of the nickel. Here's kind of in the middle, you know, what does that do to your general fund? And then, the third option, that we'll walk through here real quickly. This is the minimum option in terms of the impact of the tax rate. So, in order to qualify for the equalization, uh, you have, the, the nickel actually has to be subject to recall. And so, you have to go above the compensating rate, or excuse me, the four percent rate in order to do that by one tenth. So, you can see the forty-two eighty comes forty-two ninety in this scenario. And so, again, you apply everything down, obviously has a bigger impact on the, on the district's general fund, right? So, from our perspective, it's a, it's a balancing act of, you know, the need for the, the facility improvements, how to generate the revenue versus, you know, what's best for the, the community and the taxpayer and trying to balance the needs of obviously the operational side of, of the district as well. And so, that's really in a nutshell, the kind of, the different kind of strategies. Obviously, there's a lot of different nuances or tweaks within, within those three components. But this kind of gives you, I think, a framework for what the impact would be to your general fund under those, you know, under those different tax rate strategies.
Could, could you explain something? Um, I talked a little bit with Ms. Carrie about this earlier, I guess today. In the past, we had always, we had been advised at different times to take the compensating rate because of, um, I guess it would not benefit us anymore. And, and we did that. I, I mean, if you look, I'm sure you'd look back at our financial records. Can you explain, uh, how we went wrong by doing that?
Well, it's, it's, it's hard for me to go back in, in time. I mean, obviously, the, the, the compensating rate, when you look at a tax rate strategy, right, you can look at it in a short period, or you can look over at a longer period. And so, obviously, you, you eliminate the compounding effect if you, if you keep your rate low. So, it takes you a little bit longer to compound that back up. But obviously, you're, you're juggling that with your community needs and, and the impact of the taxpayers. So, there's, there's two sides to every equation.
So, we, we didn't necessarily do anything wrong by taking the compensate. Is that, is that correct?
Right, I mean, I mean, that, that-
I wanted to hear you say that.
Well, I mean, that, that's, that's a decision that, that you and superintents in the past made, made that decision based on your budget and staffing and all the things that went along. I mean, now, the things that they will tell you is, and Keith kind of alluded to it, is that, you know, because, you know, every year, teachers increase in the salary schedule, drivers increase in the salary schedule, things, there's that ongoing cost that go along. And most people would tell you, if you don't take the four percent, unless you've got something really in your budget that's gonna change, you can't compensate for inflation without taking the four percent. And that's what, that's probably what you hear more at KSBA training, when financiers, finance officers do training, is that, that you're losing it. And once you, when you don't take it that year, then you've lost it forever. That four percent's kind of the gift that keeps on giving. Then, you know, once you have it, and then you're allowed to take that, and you can move yourself forward in terms of doing that. So, it's not wrong. Now, I would never say a board was wrong in taking the compensating rate. If that, you know, in my fourteen years, you know, I worked in one district where every year we had enough growth that the four percent growth would actually make our rate for four percent go backwards.
That's what I think, Ms. Jenny, because that happened here. Our compensating rate was generated more than, than the-
When growth would make it go backwards, and that's not a con. I mean, you're, you're looking out, you know, for-
I think that was right in the past, and sometimes-
Or there's been years that keeping the rate the same-
Right.
Was, you know, may have been the four percent.
Right, okay, yes, yes, just depending on the situation, yeah.
Which is where we are this year. You know, keeping the rate the same is the four percent. So, um, you know, there's been years that we've done that. Um, but I, I think for the past, you know, few years, we did, we've either stayed the same or taken the four percent.
And the, the presentation typically from, uh, the state and, and the presentations at KSBA are four percent, four percent, four percent. Take advantage of it every year because you never get it back, like Anthony said. You, you've lost that opportunity. And of course, balancing it with the community and the need to the folks within the community and affordability has been part of the com- conversation. Of course, here we are this year with increased property values and, you know, when actually the compensating rate goes backwards. Probably not a good idea, you know, in many cases, to lower the rate, at least maintain the same rate. And that's, of course, that's part, was part of my conversation back in the beginning of the year about teacher salary. You know, if you, if you don't generate some funds or you're not more efficient, you're not generating typically teacher salaries. And I, you know, middle school, fifty-year-old school, and of course, I didn't go to that school. I graduated the year that that started. But it does look good from the exterior. It was not a good quality building from the beginning. Uh, but in that, to change that, you're looking at something with, within the tax structure. But if you don't tax, you won't get the funds. And at the same time, uh, what we see, what we will hear typically, and Anthony's heard this in other districts, you know, why, you know, if you, if you generate this, why can't you, uh, increase teacher salaries? Well, the different pots of money, uh, have to be explained because, uh, you know, it's kind of like the COVID conversation. You know, one size doesn't fit all. And, and some understand, some don't understand. But the sermon from some people or some groups would be always take four percent. I gotta, I must tell a joke. Worked in a district one time, been three other places. And we were going through this same field. Somebody like Anthony, actually, Glenn Beshear, went through the nickel and, uh, nickel presentation. And then, in the end, he said, uh, what, what would a nickel cost you? You know, talking to this group of five. One of the board members said, this old lady said, and it was pretty comical, she said, "Cost you the election." And, and it was funny in that meeting, and, and I've told it lots of people in that meeting, Glenn Beshear told it, uh, for years as well. But, you know, in this business of board members, I would hope that regardless of what we do, it's not based on winning, winning an election. Because in, in my opinion, not everyone wants one of these seats here. Some have referenced what, what's here, and we, uh, she said that she was gonna pray for, she prayed when she came in here. And, uh, not everybody wants to. I'd hope that whatever our decisions are, not based on trying to win an election. I know that wouldn't be my motive, and I doubt, I would hope that it's not the motive of, uh, the four of you.
Anthony, would you care to touch a little bit on the, the, the equalization piece?
If you turn to page five, if you're packing, our slide on the stage would be different. We all get a little bit. If you look at first, at that top, top, uh, bolded, your total, your bonding potential right now is almost fourteen million dollars, okay? So, regardless of what option you take, if you take one of those three options, okay? It's gonna generate the equivalent of an additional nickel for you, whichever you take. So, the, the numbers at the bottom of the page in the bolded boxes for bonding with additional nickel, your nickel will go from thirteen point eight to, or your bonding potential will go from thirteen point eight to nineteen million just by doing one of those three options. No matter which one, whichever one you choose, okay? Then, understanding that that's the most that you can count on for your part. Now, what happens next is, is that, that's when, once, you know, the legislature goes back into session, and by doing something now, the timing's right because the next year's a budget year. So, your state representatives, your state senators could have worked toward getting Rockcastle County on the list for equalization. Now, we can't tell you that that's a guarantee. We can tell you that so far, anybody that has done the additional nickels has gotten it equalized up to a certain point. So, when you throw in that amount of money with that equalization, it goes to twenty-nine million, four hundred and fifty thousand, if you get the equalization. And then, that doesn't include any of the urgent needs money, and because the building is thirtieth on the list, if you're talking about just that building, you know, that, that you don't get any, that doesn't include anything that you may or may not get if the SFCC doesn't offer for urgent needs, you know, to understand how that, how that works. So, you know, by taking one of those options, you're going from thirteen point eight to nineteen point one with just what you've done as a board. But you're putting yourself in play to go up another eleven million dollars in equalization if the legislature does that.
And Anthony, I don't, if you would, for this group, and they may know all, all of this. But talk about the, the likelihood of what's happened in previous years with the equalization. It's not a guarantee.
It's not.
I mean, it's not guaranteed, and it's partial. You know, some have waited a while and gotten partial.
The, the last round that went in, uh, they did, I think it was twenty-five percent for the first two years, and they capped it on a twenty-year deal. So, you know, what we're looking at though with these numbers-
We, we factored that in.
We factor that in, the twenty-five percent the first two years, and in capping it, I think it's at twenty-thirty-eight-
Correct.
Right now, based on the timing that you would be doing this. It's, it's like Mr. Hammond said, this is not a, it's not a guarantee. I mean, it, it requires your legislators going, you know, pulling out the big stick, you know, going to their friends and trying to work that to include that in the budget. And, you know, a lot of, you know, districts have been able to do that. And like I said, with this last round that they did two years ago, when they did the twenty-five twenty-five, anybody that had nickels that weren't equalized got equalized. There were like, I think, twenty districts, you know, that went on the rolls at that time. So, I mean, there's precedent that they've done it, and they've not, not done it. Sometimes it's taken longer. Sometimes it's been automatic, depending on how they've done it. But, uh, you know, again, the issue is, is that you're not gonna get equalization without you doing the first part of, of taking one of those three options if you choose to do that.
And then, if you would, talk a little bit about, a little bit more about the urgent needs, how you obtain that and the political aspect of-
Again, that goes back to your legislators, uh, in terms of working with those people. And essentially, uh, as Ms. Ballinger said, there's a list, CapEx list, of ratings of the buildings. And what they did the last round is they go and they look at the, the list of schools, and they go and they look at the top, work their way through. The district does not have a nickel. Then they skip over them to the next district that does have a additional nickel above. And, and when we talk about nickels, I mean, the thing to understand, when Carrie came in in nineteen ninety, everybody was required to put in a nickel, a restricted money for that. Over time, the last thirty-one years, some districts have gotten nickels because of growth nickels. Some districts have done nickels that are recallable nickels. You know, there's a variety of different nickels that are out there. But without having the second nickel, that's the piece that puts you in place. And right now, you have the one that was put in in nineteen ninety. But, Anthony, yeah.
So, Anthony, would you care, oh, go ahead.
That's okay. So, I just want, like, so I'm looking at option three, just, so, we are right now at forty-two point eight. If we go with the compensating rate, basically, we're going backwards. So, if we go with the recallable nickel on that one, we're going up a tenth.
Correct, a tenth.
From what we are right now?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
I just wanted to make sure I was breaking.
Yes, so that would be a tenth. And on a, the average property assessment, according to the PBA, is roughly seventy thousand dollars, um, for a Rockcastle County resident. And so, in calculating that, that would roughly mean a seven dollars, an annual increase of seven dollars for the average property owner.
So, for every seventy thousand dollars, an average of seven dollars is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
The difference between the tenth of a coin and the compensating rate.
And that's on numbers, that's on option three.
That's on option three.
But now, on the general fund ledger, it would show a, you see the difference there, correct? I mean, even though it shows, that, that's not a good reflection, the possibilities is much different.
What we were focusing on was the building fund.
Right, exactly.
Getting us where we needed to be. And that's the same three, one, two, and three.
Yes, right.
Whatever option.
Right.
But, but remember, and I just point this out, to me, this is the easiest way to explain the, the options. The, the first option, you're adding everything to your existing rate. You're gonna get an increase in money to generate that money that you need, and you're gonna be increasing your general fund dollars, okay? So, that, I mean, I think it's like seventy-three thousand dollars if you look, that's the right number on option one, Keith, that, like you got there at the bottom, okay? Option two, and again, all three of the options give you the nickels and what you need. But when you go to option two, you look there, the far right-hand column, you got an eighty-five thousand dollar reduction in general fund revenue. So, that means somewhere along the way, Ms. Jenny's gotta cover that eighty-five thousand in the budget to come from somewhere. So, it doesn't come without a reduction in the general fund.
But we also got ester money coming in to make it for a difference.
And then, the, the third option takes you to, uh, two hundred and forty thousand dollars you have to cover. Some from somewhere. So, I mean, like I said- So, I mean, like I said, just to make sure we all, you know, the first one adds it, the, the option two kind of splits it in the middle. I mean, and we've got a district in central Kentucky that's doing the split, they're adding, actually, they're adding a dime, and they're putting a nickel on the top, and absorbing a nickel, like you would be in your option three.
Answer comment, yes, we have the answer, and, you know, I would remind everybody that that's probably, we could get another answer, maybe, I don't know about that. Likely, maybe not likely, some say yes, some say no, but it is one-time money. And then, then I want to always bring up salary, because salaries for staff, you know, we need, we'd like to have a new facility. But at the same time, if we don't have some satisfied folks working in the facility, that's important too. Because I think we need to consider it all.
I agree, but we also, with that, need to consider our children in the homes that they're in. We've still got, I guess, and we just need to talk about the options, but we've still got a lot of families that only have one parent working because there's still lack of a lot of daycare. There's still people, so many people not working. So I think that's things, you know, we got to consider what's going on at home also. I guess I just see all this.
Ms. Jenny, I have a question, since I'm asking you, because I know you're the one who deals with this all the time, sorry, no disrespect.
Please, how won't you ask this, Jenny?
For the, for the, the difference in the general fund ledger, I know we had talked about using ESER funds or whatever, that is something that can be used in that manner, and it wouldn't reflect any changes from the government. I mean, they wouldn't, we wouldn't get in trouble for doing that, correct, to make up that difference?
It might be that we would be paying, paying for an eligible expense under ESER, that the funding would come from general fund.
And is that maintainable? Is that like, you're, if you're maintainable to do that?
No, Anthony, can you talk about that, how you broke that down into the years?
We looked at it, if you maintain consistent assessment values and consistent increases of what you had, within three years, that would be back to zero, you'd be back even.
So we would have those ESER funds, you know, through those years to be able to support that? And it would not remain that two hundred and forty thousand over that whole three years, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it would, obviously, it's subject to future assessed values, new property, and then the tax rate policy. But yeah, you're trying to be conservative, and looking at that, it's something that'd take about three years, but it'll go down. Basically stares that.
I, I think, didn't we say that was like the worst-case scenario over the three-year period? Because the second year, if you continue doing what you're doing, you're going to have an increase the second year. So it's going to reduce as it goes over the three-year period.
Yeah, I was thinking of the total cumulative change, sorry.
That, that, that number's the total cumulative decrease over the three-year period.
And then, Anthony, for the good of the cause too, conversation about what does recallable mean?
Well, i- if you do any of these three options, it's the same, it's the same process that you do to do the four percent. The only difference is, is after you have your hearing and you set your rate, you have to run an additional ad within seven days of the meeting in which you set the rate, which will tell, then add to the public that says, whatever the nickel equivalent is, it's five, five point eight. That that five, of, of the tax rate that you have set at your board meeting, five point eight cents of that would be recallable, which would mean you'd have to put in the paper, who contacted, whatever, county clerk's office, the name of the person. And from the day you set the rate, or from the, you run that, from the day you set the rate, it's a forty-five-day window that if people in the community wanted to organize a petition and put together an issue, which essentially, recallable means that the people had the right to get together the names of petition to put it on the ballot. And if there's enough names based on your registration, this county clerk would come back to the superintendent of the board and say, we have the names, you don't have the names. If they have the names, and at that point, you get to decide if you want to move forward with it. If you choose not to, then you have to go back to the forty-two point eight, and you will still be taking the four percent. So any of those three options on here, whether they're, it's going to put you, if you take any of those three options, worst-case scenario, you're going to end up as forty-two point eight.
Anthony, as you, as we, if the board chose one of those three options, and we move towards that, in that recallable ad, does it state that the four percent would be the forty-two point eight, and that it would be moving up only that tenth?
I think you have some leeway with how you, how you write that, but what you, you have to put in there what the rate is and how much is recallable. And then, have, whatever else you add to it, you know, my suggestion to you would be is that, you know, we, you know, we've looked at some, some of the ads, is to go back to Jay Ritter and Crystal Smith, the KDE. And if whatever rate you set tonight, or if you decide you want to do one of these options, then we can help you work with the ad, and you send it to them, let them verify they're okay with the ad, to make sure it's correct, what you run. And then we do the same thing, and then help you write the ad to do the other.
There's statutory requirements, and then, I mean, because I think the compensating has to be listed in there.
Right.
So I think we can work through that change.
Any other questions for us? I know y'all got a lot of discussion to do. Hopefully, we've given you the information you need to discuss it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hopefully, you will have an easier trip home than you did getting there.
We'll hang around this to hear your discussion.
If you'd like, I mean, we, I, we can give you pointers on trying down the road though.
Well, you know, twenty-five, I, I knew twenty-five came this way, actually, twenty-five goes through Kent County and down through Grant, so, I mean, I've, I've been on the upper end of twenty-five, but not the lower end of it.
I think you're good going back. Just can't get to Rockcastle. Thank you all.
With hearing the discussion from Compass Financial, we need to review, we need to approve to move forward with the tax hearing and the advertising. Ms. Ballinger, what are you recommending for us?
I, I, my recommendation is that we move forward with option three. I think that respects our, the, the needs of our community. I mean, we all know that we're, that it has been difficult, very difficult time for our entire community, the entire state. And I think that really speaks to what Ms. Anna said, of being concerned for our families.
I see it firsthand, and I'm sure, I'm sure you all do.
And in your line of work, you see that, and you're, and you're very knowledgeable, and we appreciate that input that you provide for us. The forty-two point eight at the four percent, I think, I think it's very reasonable for us to do, go to the forty-two point nine. Again, that's an average of a seven dollars for a family in Rockcastle County. And I think, I, I just, we're blessed in Rockcastle County to have a community that supports our school system. And we all know that we want what's best for our kids, and, and you've seen the pictures of our middle school. And I think it's, we've reached a point now that, that we need to move forward. And, and we've been blessed with this, this, out of COVID, if nothing else, we've been blessed with the ESER funds, and this is like a gift that we're never going to receive again. You know, if we want this opportunity to move forward for, for our county, and for providing a middle school, I don't foresee us having this opportunity again. So that's my recommendation. Ms. Jenny and I have talked extensively, and, and have talked with Mr. Anthony and Mr. Keith, about a plan with, with the ESER funds, that we feel like we could support that. And again, that's a gift that we've been given, that would enable us to be eligible for the equalization. You know, otherwise, we would, we wouldn't have that bonding capacity ever. And, and if we don't take this step forward, you know, again, there's no guarantee, just like Mr. Hammond said, there's no guarantee of the equalization. But if we don't take this step, then we, we won't ever have that opportunity for our kids to, to experience a new middle school. And I, and I think it's very important for our whole community.
I make a motion to accept and move forward with option three.
Anyone else have any questions concerning this? Concerns, questions?
I don't have questions, but I still want to come back on where we are with the compensation. What, what do you foresee, and really with the board and Ms. Ballinger, as we look at next spring, when we set the salary schedule once again?
Well, I think we were fortunate enough, and, and we've had those discussions earlier, at earlier previous board meetings, of through attrition, that we felt like, you know, we were able to provide that three percent raise for our staff. And I know that was greatly, greatly appreciated, and, and I know that, you know, we foresee multiple comments of how much our staff has appreciated that, that we were able to provide a three percent raise this school year. So, you know, I think that we've done that, we, that was first, just like you said, that we have to have teachers, and how much we value our staff, we have to have those people in our buildings to teach, and, and we, we tackled that first, and we were able to give that three percent raise this school year. So I just feel comfortable that now, our focus needs to move towards our facilities.
Well, and, and I'm all for moving towards facilities, and I'm all for improving what we have. But at the same time, I, I can't emphasize enough, especially with ESER fund, and even tonight, and, and I'm, first glance, I'm a proponent of these positions that are added. But at the same time, those, you know, I, I see more, and I know we're paying for these with ESER dollars, and we're paying for some of our previous, you know, we may have, we may have dealt with some through attrition, but we've kept some of those staff, and we're paying for those, I'm confident, out of ESER dollars. These, these will be created in somewhere out there, and I, and I see why we'd need a full-time substitute bus driver, a full-time, whatever these others are. But at the same time, those, that's three positions. And, you know, you keep adding, I mean, if we keep adding, eventually, you know, there's an issue with that, especially if you look down the road. And I, and I, I'm thankful for the three percent, we're, look back at, that's reason I have that salary schedule, I mean, salaries for a while. It's not, I don't think that that put staff in good shape by any means, if you look at inflation, and, and where we're, where we're going with inflation, as we print dollars and we send it out, and we're looking at some type of trillion-dollar package yet to come, that, that's an issue. And I, and I think everyone needs to think about that, because that's part of the equation, as, as we look long-term.
Certainly, and as we move into these discussion and these actions, as we discuss these positions, you'll see that, that, like, the mental health advocate position was through the frisky grant that we received through the governor. So these positions are in the JAG position, that's full salaries being compensated. So those are not positions that are going to increase or, or, or impact the general fund.
No, but they, but they will, okay, all right, I'll just stop at that. I just, I just want, I just want to put that on the table for consideration.
And was your question, if we want to raise the salaries again next year, how are we going to do it? Was that kind of your, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, look into the future, are we, are we considering, yes, that's it.
I agree with you on that, will we be able to again, or will this bond us?
Because we don't want to go back to what, what we saw in the last, if we just look at those five years. I mean, virtually nothing until a one-time three percent, and three percent in five years is not much more than nothing.
Doesn't even cover the cost probably of their insurance.
So in five years, we had a one percent and a three percent.
In one year, no, nothing, right?
Many years, nothing before that.
In five years, finally, a four percent, three of it this year.
No, that's a question, I mean, I have the same concern, yeah, what will that do for any kind of?
And Ms. Jenny, you can probably speak to that, but I do not feel like this, because then we still have, moving into next year, we still have that option of the four percent the following year, you know, to help sustain that with our, with our, looking at a salary increase for our teachers. So I don't feel like this in any way binds us due to those COVID funds that we have coming in. And then, again, we're continuing to look at our allocations. I mean, Ms. Jenny and I are looking at that every time we have a position that comes available, whether that's classified or certified. We're working with our principals, and, and even since we've met as a board, you know, we've absorbed other positions, and we're going to continue to do that, and we have those numbers of, of that bottom line where we have to get to. And we're, you know, we're just working as hard as we can to get to that, and to continue to absorb those positions as they become available. But then also balancing that with not damaging the instructional program. You know, that's, you can't just cut without looking to see what's the impact's going to be in the school.
And when we talk about the instructional program, I, I, I think the well-being of personnel is part of that. I mean, that is, that is part of it, that's, that's morale thing.
We all agree with that.
Might I ask what, what your thoughts are on this tax rate?
Well, I, I just want, I have no problem with, with the recommendation, as long as everyone understands, and that we're looking towards salary increases.
That'd be your best recommendation, and I'm asking from your experience.
Given, given this option, if we're looking, but, but we cannot look at just facilities alone. If we're looking at facilities, op, option three's the way to go. But I think, aside from this conversation, we have to have this conversation about staff, or should do, or should be, at least considering.
And I think that, that as a board, you all should be commended for giving the three percent raise this year, and looking at that, and, and us all working together to look at how we can absorb some positions to be able to, to make certain that we were able to get that. We just need to continue doing that moving forward.
Well, and then, I guess, one final question would be, if we were looking at next spring with this tax rate, what are your thoughts on the salary for next year?
I think that we should absolutely consider trying to give an additional raise, if we're able to, to take that four percent the following year.
So.
But we're going to have to continue to stay on our schedule of absorbing and, and make certain that we're doing a good job monitoring that, and making sure that those SBDM allocations are getting closer in line. You've seen those, you know that we've been out of line, and making sure that we're working to get back in range.
And so then, could we anticipate your recommendation to have a salary increase in the spring?
I'm afraid to say that without, looking, I mean, that's a long way ahead, and I don't want to say.
Mr. Hammond, are you suggesting that we shouldn't, that we shouldn't build a middle school?
That, no, I, I said, if we look at the facility alone, this is what we should do. I want to know what our thoughts are towards that.
I think that we should absolutely work towards giving an additional raise, but I don't think that anybody right now can project what's going to happen today to the spring. But as we continue, if we continue to absorb and continue to move towards making certain we're in line with our SBDM allocations, then I see no reason that we couldn't look at that again.
And, and as you mentioned, you know, we have to look at the whole, we have to look at the facilities, our staffing, our instructional programs, what, you know, we've been working with, looking at enrollment, projecting enrollment, what's happening at the state level with SEEK, and, you know, the grants and the programs, that we have to look at the whole. And I, I don't know that we could pinpoint that tonight, but I think that continues to be a focus, you know, that we continue to adjust and monitor, and, you know, be the most efficient school district that we can be. You know, saving an energy and opening up more dollars in our general fund. You know, and those are all conversations that we're having, and work that the administrative team is doing, you know, with Ms. Ballinger. And to say that we could pinpoint, I couldn't, I know I couldn't give that answer tonight. But I do know that our staff, we have the most wonderful staff in Rockcastle County schools, and we need to continue to support them and, you know, be competitive. We have many positions that open, and we want to continue to be competitive in the region with all salaries, both classified and certified, and that is absolutely work that we need to continue to focus on. I completely agree with you, that our staff, we need to continue to do that work. But there are many factors that, you know, would go into that decision.
Mr. Hammond, I, I'm going to put words in your mouth, isn't that scary?
I'll make that come out.
No, I think that with this conversation, I feel confident that you are in agreement that we need to do what we can do to try to get these equalization funds for a building project. Since this is sort of like a no-brainer, you know, it's one of those things, you spend this much money, but you're going to get this outcome. So, but your concern, I feel like, is will our tax rate be able to support a salary increase, which we are, we all feel confident that our staff would need, is, is that what I'm?
True, and there's really two more factors, and of course, this weekend, I wanted, and you remembered from the conversation we had in the work session. When I referenced the salary increase, and I was posed with, how are you going to pay for that? Efficiency's the key, and so we have to be efficient. And then the other piece of that, of course, I'd ask about the enrollment and ADA, and how it's dropping over time, that we're declining. To look at one piece of the system by itself is not good business. And so that's the reason I want to bring the salary up, and you cannot look at any of this in the absence of looking at enrollment and average study attendance. Because the, the SEEK dollars, and Anthony can attest to this, it doesn't seem to increase very much. So.
They divide it, they divide it every year, don't they?
Absolutely.
So is there, um, so Ms., I want to make sure, okay, Ms. Carrie? So your recommendation to us is for us to take the option three, which would, um, it would bring it to forty-two point nine as the re, comparable nickel, correct?
Yes, we would be making a motion to, um, to move forward with the tax hearing and being able to advertise that. We do have to advertise that hearing for two weeks, consecutive weeks in the newspaper. And we would not be able to advertise that this week, so that would be advertised on the nineteenth and on the twenty-sixth. And then we would have to have a special called board meeting on Thursday, September the second.
Is there a, uh, just curious, is there a deadline to turn that into the, there he is, I thought.
Forty-five days, that's why this is a, this is a strict timeline.
Okay, sure.
But September the second, and again, that would be, um, setting the tax rate at forty-two point nine, which is an increase of one tenth. And that would equal to the average Rockcastle County family, a seven dollar increase on their taxes.
Uh, what we are doing here is just approving to move ahead with this recommendation. Uh, and with that being said, there will be two weeks of it being run consecutively in the newspaper on the nineteenth and twenty-sixth, I believe is what I wrote down here. And the hearing would be set for Thursday, September the second. Anyone have any other questions?
If we, if you move forward in this, is the hearing timed six o'clock, is that suitable?
Yep.
Is that allowing you?
I just wanted to say that, um.
When, when we're looking on second?
September the second, the Thursday.
Six, yeah.
I think sometimes there's, um, a lack of understanding from the community on the taxes. Um, you know, I, I've heard several community members just along the years to say, I don't have kids in school, you know, they don't want to pay the taxes or whatever. But I think that, um, that if there's good communication to the community to help them to understand. You know, that, you know, a new middle school in the long run will bring more people, you know, there's just a cycle of industry and, and all of that. But, um, I do think it's important, me as a new board member, and I see this now, but I, I think I remember last year when we looked at the tax. Rockcastle was like one of the lowest around, you know?
Probably still.
And, uh. Yeah, and, you know, maybe that could be, that, it opened my eyes when I looked at that with surrounding counties, like, wow, you know, that's a lot of money away from our kids. You know, even if we're still lower than surrounding counties, but, um, comparable, I feel like it's fair to our kids to be comparable to surrounding counties, you know, with that tax rate. But that's all, there's, it's more than whether you have kids or not, it's our, you know, future generation and, um, and man, these kids need a new middle school. This community needs a new middle school and more money for teachers.
I would be all for more ambitious tax rate, I'll just say that, but I know it's not feasible probably in the short term. Um, but that would be ultimately what I would love, but yeah, you gotta work with your community and you gotta educate them on what this goes towards. And then maybe later on, because school employees are a lot of this county's revenue, I would have to imagine. And, you know, encouraging that and telling them, you know, this is what we're working for, new school, better salaries, better, you know, facilities. It's important, and I think that's our job is to, as elected officials, to let people know, hey, we're not just trying to jack up the tax rate, we're trying to really help.
And I, I agree with you on a lot of aspects, I, I would just, I, I have to say something that goes along the line, Anna said. So many of our families still though are really, really suffering and, I mean, I would, I would dare say that no one in this frame suffers and struggles like a lot of people. That Ms. Anna has to help every day, so, um, unless you see it, sometimes you don't understand it. So, um, I do, I completely understand, I see it.
The school system deserves a piece of the pie too, and that's kind of one of my beefs.
Sure, definitely.
You know, it goes everywhere else and the taxes should come back to our kids.
Yeah, and I totally agree with that. So if we are good, we are going to approve to move, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hammond, go ahead.
Anthony may want to comment on this, go back to the cheap rate, yes, tax rates here are low and they've been low. And we've accomplished what we've gotten through efficiency, okay, being very frugal with what we have. And of course, as you raise taxes, it's an inverse relationship, you get less from the state. Now, of course, we can't lower it enough to where the state, to where somebody else pays all our bills, but as we look toward raising taxes in the future. State contribution goes down, so. We have to keep that in mind too, as we balance what we've got.
That's what the experts tell us what to do.
And I think option three very much respects our community.
I agree, I can, I can go with option three.
That's, that's the key, is, is showing, we need to respect our community and the needs that our community have. And I think with the, with our Esser funds and, and the blessing that we have with those, then we're able to do this, become eligible for equalization, but the burden is not on our community. You know, we're absorbing that burden through our Esser funds and, and still allowing us the benefit of the nickel, but it does not place the, the burden on our community.
You know, uh, serving on this board as long as I have, one of the hardest things to understand from year to year is all of the different tax rates. And understanding, you know, if you do this, then, even though it, on paper, it may look good at that moment, it may not, the outcome may not be as good. But, uh, with that being said, we need a motion to approve to move forward with this tax, Ms. Anna? Second, all in favor? Okay, so that is gonna be set, you're gonna advertise the nineteenth and twenty-sixth, Ms. Carrie, for us?
And then our hearing will be Thursday, September second at six P M.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
We'll, we'll be in touch with y'all on that and stuff.
Yes, okay, thank you both very much, we much, very much appreciate your assistance.
You should go through Scapple Kane, it's a beautiful road.
We're not carsick.
It's Scapple Kane.
You'll, you'll get to your destination.
You'll be home tomorrow sometime.
Thank you again for coming and explaining everything to us.
Thank you both.
Okay, item five B is review and approve the monthly financial reports, Ms. Jenny?
You have been provided the monthly financial reports for the month beginning July. Were there any questions as you had an opportunity to review those?
Any questions, Ms. Jenny? If not, need a motion to approve the monthly financial reports, go first, all in favor? Item five C, review and approve the JAG Kentucky Comprehensive Job Specialist Position, Mr. Repper.
As you all know, last month, you approved the MOU with JAG Kentucky, and JAG stands for Jobs for America's Graduates, its program's been around for many, many years. Wonderful program, uh, glad that, that you approved that opportunity for our students. And essentially, um, I don't know how much, we had a little bit of discussion last, last month about it, but we have to create a position for, uh, for this, uh, this MOU. And this JAG specialist, um, as, as Mr. Hammond mentioned, this is a new position that's created, but this salary is fully funded by the program. Um, and so, um, I'm really excited about that opportunity, this, this person, this will post this job, you approve it, uh, they will be at the high school. Uh, they will teach, uh, three classes at the high school, they also will have a couple out of their academy. And essentially, if you looked at the job description, uh, they target students that, um, that may be at risk for, uh, for different kinds of factors. Maybe attendance is not, not great, uh, maybe home life's not, not great, identifying students to help them obtain, uh, a job after they graduate high school. So this person would work not only in her school to teach classes, they would teach soft skills, they would mentor those students, they would work with, uh, community partners to help those students obtain jobs after, uh, they graduate. And then they maintain connections with those students, they have to, for a year after, um, they leave the program. So this would be, you know, would be fully implemented, obviously, year one, uh, this is students that, that are freshmen through the twelfth grade. And we would hope to be able to, by the time they're a senior, these students are seniors, to broaden their horizons, to give them, uh, opportunities, to give them a mentor that can be with them, that can assist them.
Mr. Repper, will this also include students that are coming from specialized programs, programs from the vocational school?
Uh, it, it could.
Like welding or auto mechanic?
It could potentially, a lot of those students are already on a career path, um, so it, it, it could. Um, and, and certainly, we already have established relationships, Mr. Cook, probably speak a little bit more about, about that. But we have students that are already, already on, uh, on career paths and, and have those trainings and, and have some of those opportunities. So this could, could assist that, uh, but it would also target students that, that maybe don't go to the vocational school. There'll be students that have struggled academically, and that's the, that's the intention, to help them, you know, maybe those that are not necessarily going to college, doesn't mean they can't go to college or wouldn't, but. But it's, it's to help, it's targeting those students that sometimes need that extra attention, uh, for, to be successful after high school.
I, I had a very small question concerning that, years ago, they had like a job, it was some type of position within the district where they would help students find jobs in the community. Because I can, I can remember employing some, uh, will this individual make, uh, do the contacts with like businesses, if they will be doing that? Because I have got maybe two or three businesses that I know of right now that are desperate for workers.
That's the time.
I mean, so right now would be maybe a great opportunity, so.
Uh, uh, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the, if you, that's what they do, I mean, that's what they're going to be doing. Uh, assisting, you know, I'm thinking of a couple in my mind too, that, that we can send them to and make those connections and take them down there.
It's a great experience for the young people too, because it kind of takes the, uh, they still have that anticipation and excitement about working. But someone's there as a contact that kind of eases that nervousness, that, it's sort of like a transition into life, so.
Today, I'm, I'm talking with, briefly with Representative Bray, and he was talking about the program in, in Garrett County. And how successful it's been over there for something several years, and how successful it is and how, uh, they work with community partners to, to, uh, get students jobs and then assist them for a year, I think that's awesome.
I think that's a big part.
You know, you're staying in touch with these students, and you think if a student has had this same teacher, this same person, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year, help them get a job. And then they help them transition the next year, and that's, you talk about a mentor.
Yeah.
Um, that's a, that's a true mentor.
That's a lifelong friend.
That's a lifelong friend for these students, and, and we don't, you know, the salary's there, so, I move for purpose.
Do we, this is a random question, do we do a retention, like rate of like how many kids actually complete four years of college, four years of a trade school, or do we keep track of that in our county? Just curious.
Every year, we, we have to report transition to.
I don't know if they do a whole four years, uh, but they do want a couple, is it a four, four years, that they follow up with all graduates? Oh, it is four years.
There's a state report that all school districts receive.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that they.
Are we pretty successful?
I think we, I think that success has increased over, it's continually going up. Um, and many of the programs and grants that, um, Rockcastle County Schools is blessed to have that additional staff, um, you know, gear up. And, and it jobs for America's graduates, um, folk rehab, um, all of those programs, um, being mentors to students and working with them can be a big part of that continuing to increase.
Good, good, uh, that be brought back, because that is a good question, the data, to see exactly where we are, maybe at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Be good information.
I'm just, yeah, I would love to know.
Yes, we can certainly do that.
High school transition report, I couldn't think of it.
We had a motion, Mr. Hammond made the first motion, can I get a second for approval, all in favor? Item five D is review and approve the mental health advocate position, which is going to be paid for through the FR Frisky Grant, Mr. Repper?
Yeah, well, good thing I'm not asking for money, it's paid for, um, or if you approve. Um, the first, we got a hundred dozen of Frisky Grant, and part of that plan was to employ another mental health advocate as part of a trauma plan. You know, we were gonna move forward with that plan regardless, we had that in mind, uh, of course, when we developed that. Um, and so I'm super excited about that, uh, they're going to work, of course, um, with our Friskies, work with our counselors, uh, work with our mental health coordinator uh, to implement that trauma plan, one thing I'm, I'm really excited about, we've already scheduled our first arts night out for September twenty-third. Um, and so students that, that we know are having some emotional, uh, emotional issues and their families, they're gonna be able to come to that, we're excited about that. This person will help coordinate that, um, and, and work with, work with, um, through that trauma plan. So it's just one part of their, of their job responsibility that we are excited about.
Which school will they be located at?
They're gonna be, uh, primarily, they're gonna kind of be a couple of different places. Um, they're gonna be at, at the, at the academy and the high school, they also will be at the middle school sun. So the other position will be primarily elementary level, um, and then this position will be middle and high, assisting really both and academy. They'll, they'll, they'll go around quite a bit, you know, I'm a case load student.
And the needs are great, as we've all already, um, agreed upon, and, and you know, in, um, Galton County, I don't think Galton's much different from here in, in that respect. And that conversation was had, it's not, it's not just the students, it's the parents, it's the employee. You know, the employees here are, you know, that's not the purpose of this, but at the same time, I think we need to be considerate of all. Everyone's, uh, dealt with a tremendous load for the last, uh, since, uh, month, well, our mid, what, March to where we are now, however many months that makes, a year later. And I think we need to be aware of that with staff as well, they're, they're troubled too.
And, and you know, students that are in tier two or tier three that have more, more social, emotional needs than our average, average student. Part of that plan involves their family, that's why we're having family engagement nights, that was put out as part of that Frisky plan. So all these nights that we plan one a month, uh, we hope to get their family there, we hope to get the grandmother there, the aunt, uncle, the mom, dad, whoever's raising them. So that they can, they can have a night where they can participate in an activity that's therapeutic and a supportive environment, because it doesn't end. Obviously, our job, you know, we, when they go home, we want to change that dynamic as much as we can. We know that's not, that it's not gonna happen just overnight, but hopefully if we can share some good experiences and help families, that's what we want to do.
Mr. Hammond, to speak to, to what you just said about our staff, Ms. Angie Payne, who is our mental health coordinator, is available to our staff as well. And I know, um, that she has reached out and, and multiple staff members have reached out to her and she's been able to help them secure additional outside resources. So we are trying to serve our staff through that position as well.
And I'm not trying to make it all about the staff, but you know, I just want to go that in.
Yeah, it's important.
The, the, the family night, though, working with that, I think about our successful transition and, uh, the success through college and how that works out. Whether it's gonna be that way or not, uh, it doesn't happen on its own, none of it happens in isolation.
No, that's right.
I'll say this too, just, just, just for what it for, a new middle school, that'll be a morale booster for the staff. No, 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 they'll, they'll, they'll be glad to, to, I know, you know, that building, of course, I was principal there for five years.
Well, I mean, it goes above and beyond that, uh, because we can repurpose that building where the school is now for so many great things for our kids that are not in this community now, we need something for our kids to do.
That's what I was thinking of.
So it gives, it gives many avenues that we're not there before, so it's very exciting.
Mr. Repper, this, I was going to, department reports, but it goes along with what you're talking about, um, I read on there that like all students will receive social, emotional instruction.
Yes, super excited about that.
That is awesome.
Can we talk about that now or wait?
Go ahead and talk about it right now, we're just shorting it later.
Well, uh, yeah, yeah, uh, Damon said, maybe if you don't talk too much, you're maybe. He can tell me for talking, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm very excited, we, we purchased this, uh, social, emotional curriculum with our counselors. You know, one good thing about, and I don't want to get way off track, but one, one Fridays, we had, of course, last school year, we had those days. Uh, and, and we met, we had staff meetings, and so we were able to meet, our counselors had never really come together. You know, they were all at the different schools, so once a month, Ms. Angie Payne and I, we met with all the counselors, that was so wonderful, I cannot emphasize to you how wonderful it was to have our counselors at different schools at different levels, talking to each other about the needs of our students. So that began that conversation, that began the conversation for a universal mental health assessment that we're going to do. That, that began the conversation for our trauma plan, so that was a wonderful opportunity, that collaboration. So part of, part of that was we need a curriculum, we need to teach our students how to deal with frustrations, how to properly communicate. You know, something as simple as, uh, and I think I gave her some sample lessons that their, maybe their secondary are gonna teach. Um, it's, it's exciting, because our teachers, you know, will be, uh, will be teaching at the, at the elementary level, maybe one lesson a week on social, emotional learning, how, how to deal with emotions, things of that nature. And Mr. Bussler, he's got a plan for the high school too, uh, a little bit different, of course, high school's a different animal, but it's good, it, I'm excited about that, those opportunities. And that's, of course, part of that, that, that tier one where every student gets, you know, we could all use a lesson in proper communication from time to time.
Sure.
So, um.
I'll follow up and, and brag on Mr. Repper and Ms. Angie and the work they, they've done. I mean, they have worked tirelessly and our counselors of putting this trauma pan- plan together. You know, it's really easy to put great ideas on paper, but they are really moving forward and implementing this and, and it's just gonna be such a benefit to our students. And, and I'll put a plug in for Mr. Repper, we did have, um, Amber Philpott and WKYT is going to be doing a, a session, a segment. Um, what day is that gonna air, the?
August the sixteenth. She's actually coming here, um, Thursday, it's twenty, she's coming Thursday. She's gonna, um, um, film a couple of our counselors and then, uh, and then probably go to another one of our schools to, to maybe get some more jobs preparing, teachers preparing. And that, that revolves around social emotional learning, well, just, just us. She, uh, she's talked to other school districts as well, but, uh, but I'm excited that she's, she's featuring our, our county and our students. And then some of our students are gonna be on that program on August the sixteenth.
Yes, yes, we had, we took some of our students to the KEDC office in Lexington and they've interviewed some of our students about social emotional learning and some experiences they've had, so it's gonna, we're really excited to see it air.
Do you remind us again when that airs?
They'll send out a text and let everybody know.
I'd like to see that.
Certainly.
All right, so, uh, we need approval for the mental health advocate position.
I'll make the motion first.
All in favor? Next, we have review and approve the RCHS school grounds monitor position.
Unfortunately, this is not funded by some, uh, some state grant or some other types of fund.
Well, we need to just go on.
I will say this, this, this position has, it's been with us for several years. It was left off the salary schedule the last time, so we're asking you to put it back on there. Uh, Ms. Linda Tiber did it at the high school for many years. She retired in December. And from December till May, of course, you know, that was during, during COVID time, we were in and out of school. And so we didn't, we didn't, we subbed that out. We had two individuals that, that served in that position and, uh, uh, we couldn't, we had a hard time finding someone. So we had two, two subs that were there to do that, but we do need someone there at the high school, uh, to monitor the grounds. That is a very valuable position in terms of school safety. Um, you know, we have high school students, obviously, that, that leave the campus and arrive at Campbell State, but because they drive, it's a different, different circumstance than there are other schools. Um, that's a position that, uh, you know, from a safety standpoint, something that, that I feel very strongly, we, we need eyes in that parking lot and to monitor those grounds at all times.
And she, that was, that's done in that little building there as she cranked that, there in my little office.
Yep, she's got a radio and, uh, and, or she had a radio, of course. We monitor and every time, you know, a student leaving, Miss Sandy.
Listen, she was on it.
Melissa wouldn't tell her and she was on it.
She was on it. Yeah, she's doing a great job with that position.
You know, I'm just curious, uh, who recommended the location of that building? I mean, uh, another reason I'm saying that, in my mind, I would think that maybe it need to be relocated somewhere else to, for her, for whomever, I said her because you had.
I think maybe Mr. Hammond can talk about that. I don't know, I don't know what that was built, but that, I think the mentality was that that, well, going back several years when I was in high school, that wasn't there. And I do remember, we had a lot of thefts. Do you remember when we had those thefts taking that parking lot? And there were some other things that happened, um, that were not good in that, that parking lot. So I don't know if that was the rationale to guard or to watch that parking lot because there was, um.
I think it's entering and exiting the most part, uh, seeing who's coming and going.
Primarily students, you know, you could, we, we could say, well, as you enter the grounds, but, uh, the primary entrance was the student parking lot. What happened there?
Ms. Angie, uh, Mr. Trent is not here to speak to that, but he and I have had multiple discussions of the need. Well, number one, that actual shack, guard shack is in very poor condition. So physically moving that, he did not feel like that, that it was in a condition that we could physically move it. So we have had discussions of mo- of in the future of trying to relocate that and maybe using that person not only for students, but also any visitors that enter the campus, you know, to be able to radio to Miss Sandy or radio in to Mr. Bussel to say, you know, Ms. Angie Mink is here to pick up her child and, and you know, just using that more as a safety and all around safety, not just monitoring our students. So what, he and I have had those discussions.
Thank you.
So instead of maybe moving that shack, could we maybe add another shack and then maybe fix that shack up a little bit? So if that person needed to be at this location at this time of the day, maybe when, during the day versus when our students may be in the parking lot and need some extra monitoring?
Well, and, as you know, four sixty-one's gonna be widened as well. That project is, I don't know what the timeline is for that, but that shoulder is going to change. That, that entryway has to change the way, when that's, when that's widened. So I think that was part of the rationale.
So we were just kinda waiting until that, that road construction came through to try to kinda do that all in one, one package.
Uh, this person, uh, what would be their hours?
Seven thirty to, to three o'clock essentially. Be there ten thirty when students start arriving and be there till the buses, buses leave at three, three ten, three thirty.
Anybody have any questions? Need enough motion to approve this school grounds monitor position? All in favor? Uh, review and approve a full-time substitute bus driver position.
Uh, so this is a position that we've never had before, obviously, um, pretty self-explanatory, I think. I will say that this opportunity came about because we, through retirement, we had, uh, one driver retire and I had the opportunity and the timing was right to combine two routes together into one route. So that's where the funding for the position is coming from. So in essence, we're moving from that route over to the sub route. And then obviously, we're gonna save as well through efficiency. We're not gonna have as many buses in the same, similar area, which will save us fuel, save us wear and tear, uh, saves us maintenance. So we're, we're saving in multiple different ways, so, um, that, that's the position.
You have several positions, uh, vacant, correct? Have you been able to fill those, Mr. Repper?
Yep. Now, we'll probably, we will start school with open routes. That will have to be filled through sub drivers, myself, teachers.
Ms. Carrie?
Yes, I will sign up. If he needs me, I will.
How many routes, how many open routes?
As of today, three. As of today, three. I'm still working through some. I'm not done yet. I'm not done, so it could be less by the time, by next time passed, yes.
And, and that's even combining one, that's, that's anyway.
It was almost having a session as well, combined, just to have one less spot to have to fill. But hopefully this will help recruit and anybody that's in training and, you know, hopefully if they're looking for a position, they don't have to wait for a route to come open if this ra- if this position's not filled. We need more of these, you know, one's not enough, but it's a start.
And what, if it's fair or reasonable to say that you'll actually be fortunate to be able to fill that? I mean, if you could get those other three drivers and then fill that, you'd be on top of the world.
Absolutely.
I don't know, I'm all for it, but I don't know that you'll be able to pull that off.
At least it'll be there if we ever get to, I can't say, I was gonna talk about this in my department reports, but I, I do have three individuals training right now that have gotten their permits. Uh, we started class work with them on Monday. So three's a really good number for us, plus I'm training another mechanic as well. So I've got four in a class right now.
That's a big fan.
So that, that's, yeah, it's huge, uh, that's huge, but they won't be ready for a couple of months.
And, and we hope, uh, and pray that they're completers, don't they?
Exactly, exactly. They, they have at least gotten their permits, uh, done their physical part, so they're, they, they've made it that far, so that's a good, that's a good sign. It's a good sign, it's a good start.
Can I ask you a question? I don't know if you know, um, I know I've been approached before by classified staff that's retired and has asked me why they can't come back and sub in different positions. Could they come back and sub as a bus driver? I mean, I'm just curious because they, they said that they.
It's complicated.
I mean, I, this is what I've been asked and I was like, well, I don't real- I, I didn't know what to tell them. They said that they, they had wondered because certified staff could come back and sub, but classified staff could not come back and sub.
It's complicated. We're actually working through that process right now as a possibility. Even if they can, the number of hours that they can actually work is really, really small, really small. Just any of you wanna?
And what sets that guidelines? I mean. Portions of the guidelines are set by the state and, um, there are certain regulations that retirees must follow in order to keep their, um, retirement. Um, for instance, they have to get approval to work in a school district, you know, prior to just going back. Um, with, and there's some differences between certified and classified that are designated by the state. Um, so we just have to follow the, the procedures that the state sets forth over the pension plans.
So this is a state guideline, it's not a local guideline, correct?
If, um, if an employee goes over, if a classified employee returns to a position, um, and goes over their hours, this district could be responsible for paying the bill for health insurance. So that's a district decision, that's a board decision. You know, that's a decision.
Bottom line, it's expensive.
Right, but those are decisions that the board can make, um, in policy. Um, so if that's an expenditure that the board wishes to assume, then certainly we could, you know, explore those opportunities.
Is, is that, when you said they go over the hour, I'm sorry, I'm asking these questions. Is when you say go over the hours, you talk about a, a yearly number?
Weekly.
Weekly, a weekly number?
Weekly.
I understand, okay. Thank you. If they ever ask me again, I can tell them that.
And the district would get a bill that they would then pay to the state to pay for something, you know, that the retiree is receiving. It, it is complicated and it's different, there's some differences for classified and certified. And it most oftentimes, you know, we have to communicate very clearly to the pension plan, um, over Kentucky.
I just thought, you know, wow, that'd be great.
I thought of pressure, we, we've talked about it, thought about it every.
Have it every, yeah, explored them all.
And there can be no pre, pre-existing, you know, if we have a retiree, there can be no existing agreement with a, a current employee that they're going to come back and be hired by the district. Um, and some of those guidelines are new and, um, you know, it just provides limitations for school districts, provides limitations when there are really wonderful, qualified, trained individuals that could be subbing, uh, for Mr. Ken or, uh, working, uh, for Ms. Jamie. Uh, we would love nothing more than to have them back, uh, working with, you know, the school district because they're trained, they're, they're, you know, our employees. But there are regulations that we have to follow.
Any other questions? I hope you get all the staff you need.
Me too, me too.
I need a motion to approve the full-time substitute bus driver position. Person's second, all in favor? Okay. Item five G, review and approve reconvene the local planning committee for the purpose of revision of a current district facilities plan to change the status of Rockcastle County Middle School from a permanent center to a transitional center with the intention of showing a new middle school to be built and deleting renovation needs shown in priority two C point three of the current district facilities plan.
That was the most cool way.
Yes, it was.
Virtually, and, and Mr. Clark is on with us, but virtually what that means is, um, we, according to state guidelines, in order for us to reconvene our, our local planning committee to make an amendment to our current district facilities plan, we need board approval to bring that committee back together. And in doing so, we would be changing that dis- or amending the district facilities plan to show a new building for the middle school instead of a renovated building. So we're asking permission to pull that local planning committee back together. And Mr. Trent, do you wanna speak to that further?
Uh, honestly, I'm having a real hard time hearing in here, but, um, basically what, what we've done, we've, we've, uh, under item five G, we've added a, a step-by-step process to make an amendment. We consulted with Marcus Highland and, um, other people, uh, at the state department to find out what we needed to do. And we're gonna move forward with making that, uh, bring that committee back together and try to make that amendment process as, as simple and streamlined as possible. Uh, of course, we're under time crunch, seems like everything's under time crunch always, but, um, uh, yep, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, it's all pretty much in there. If you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those or, um, we got a lot of that, we'll, we'll run around here, so.
We can hear him in the background. Enjoying.
Thank you, Mr. Trent.
So this is in essence for discussing further building such as the middle school.
Yes, because our district facilities plan currently does not list the middle school as a possibility for a new building. It only references renovation. So in other, in order for us to move forward, we have to amend that and show a new building and not a renovation. And according to KDE, that'll be a matter of, of us pulling that committee together for two meetings.
And that's easy enough to accomplish through that, through that process. And, and that's a good opportunity to communicate. I mean, it's, it's further opportunity to discuss with community, you know, looking at this tax rate hearing. And then, um, that building, you know, what, I can remember when that happened, I can remember when, uh, nineteen seventy-two took place. But, but it's a bigger deal than that. And, and I mentioned this earlier, talking about facilities, because I remember, and some of you might remember, for instance, the old Mount Vernon Elementary, when Mount Vernon Elementary was built, there were people, lots of people, so get ready, that thought it was good enough because their mom or dad or grandpa went there and they didn't want it torn down. Well, when you look at the middle school and it looks pretty good on a drive-by, although it's not the best quality building, it'd probably be a repeat. I mean, there'll be people that'll say, you know, what's wrong with that? But anyway, it's short process.
So this is the, uh, this is the plan we have to, we have to do this before we can move forward with anything else.
Yes, right.
It's the first step of whatever the decision is made to go further, so we have to do that. Uh, will you remind me again, your local planning committee, what that, it consists of, the individuals for that?
Yes, actually, that's next for us to review and approve the membership, so I've got it here and I'll be happy to deliver that.
So we need a motion to approve, to reestablish this.
Make a motion, yeah.
All in favor?
Yes.
I didn't wanna read all that again and tell you all.
One more time.
Item five H, review and approve the membership of the local planning, so you answered my question.
Um, and it's, there is a spreadsheet in your drive that outlines that, but that KDE sets forth the membership of this committee. Um, we do have to modify the membership because of changes, um, in, in administration, changes in, in parents no longer having students at certain schools, um, from the last time that this committee convened. Um, we have the list here, the, the, the part that the board needs that selects is, are the community members. We did put an advertisement on our district website asking for nominations. Um, we received four nominations. Um, we have to select three people out of those four nominations, but one of those nominees that's listed here, Mr. Brian Carter, has declined that. Um, and the person that is not listed that we got a nomination for late is Mr. John Diehouse. So if Mr. Brian Carter declined, we could pull him off and, and add John in place of that. So that would be our three community members. And in addition to that, we ne- you need to choose someone off of the Board of Education to serve on that. Ms. Anna has expressed an interest in that, of serving. Um, so that will be up to you all to decide the makeup and approve the makeup and then decide who you would like to serve from the Board of Education.
And we do that at a different time or do we need to do that?
Yeah, we do that right now. You'll, you.
I would just like to go ahead and recommend Ms. Anna, since she has that interest in that, if you'd like to do that, I'm fine with that, being the board representative.
I have, I have interest as well, but I'm good with that. I did the energy savings, so.
I really have no interest in it, doing that. And I don't mean to be rude, but I've done it before, everybody.
Welcome to a team, absolutely.
There have to be public meetings, so we don't, yeah, we can come and support.
Absolutely, and we would invite everyone who would like to participate to do so.
Good arm wrestling, boy.
Good, hard lose.
And what this is, this is, just for the record, this is the, the committee that is going to establish the facilities plan. You know, um, and, uh, we definitely need our board represented well to, you know, I'm curious. When we make the amendment, I guess I have a question, Ms. Carrie, will the amendment have other changes too, or is that the only change?
The only change at this point will be just to change that middle school portion.
Okay, just curious. All right, thank you so much. So, uh, do we need to? Okay, just curious. All right, thank you so much. So uh do we need to?
We need to approve this committee that is listed on this spreadsheet with the addition of Anna serving as the Board of Ed representative.
Okay, so we need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, second.
All in favor? Ms. Anna, it looks like you got you a knock there to remember.
Thank you, Ms. Anna.
Okay, item five, I review and approve a full-time substitute cooker-baker miss.
I'm not trying to copy off Ken. It is very difficult to approve and keep a substitute cook because they don't have set hours and set times to work. So this would at least give us one person, always have us the first person out um during absences or quarantines, which we dealt with a lot last year. So this person would just be the first person you call if you need us a, she's going to be the one, he or she would be the one, be the first one out. And then this would also be a person that would be getting lots of on-the-job training and you would know when a permanent position became open, that person would be ready to go.
Will that person get paid mileage, since they'll be traveling to different schools, no?
We do have three vacancies. We have one at the middle school, two at the high school, and one at Mount Vernon, so we're starting the year short already, and we hope to get those filled or filled as soon as possible.
That's a big position, that's a lot, I mean, two meals, long little mouth.
I'm sorry, I didn't have enough in there, but I mean, that's a huge job.
And then one hundred people in between.
Motion?
Yeah, motion to approve, second, all in favor? Okay. Item six A, review the superintendent's personnel action report. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Carrie, sorry, let's hear your growth plan.
Okay, I've given you all copies of that. Um again, um as part of my professional growth plan, that, you know, this is something that we, that I expect and and expect everyone in our central office to be be growing professionally, as well as our administrators, and of course, our teachers as well. So it's important for me to model that for them and for all of our staff. So um focusing on two areas this year, um continuing to focus on human resource leadership, because I feel like that that's a real need across the district. Um some things that I specifically would like to work on for this year is um implementing, as of course, we have discussed before, but implementing an advisory group for the superintendent to promote teacher leadership across the county. Um also further developing our new teacher cadre and then creating a grow-your-own-leadership cadre for our aspiring principals and district leaders. You know, we value our teachers and value what we have in in our in our employees in Rockcastle County and just encouraging them to grow professionally and seeking out those leadership roles. Um I've looked, I'm looking at Ms. Erin as I say that, because I keep encouraging her to to seek and 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 move into that administrative coursework. But but to further developing that program that that um will will help us to establish, you know, the leaders of tomorrow through our staff that we currently have here. So focusing on that on standard four, and then instructional leadership, I think, is vital this year. Um you know, we've all discussed over and over the impact of COVID and learning loss. So I feel like as superintendent, it's important for me this year to focus on instructional leadership. Um and a thought that that I have shared with staff and with all of our administrators is the need for us to intentionally focus on standards work. You know, we have brand-new teachers, we have first, second-year teachers, we have teachers that have changed positions and just going back and making certain that we're focusing on standards, that we're all aware of sta- of the standards that we should be teaching to our students. And then moving forward with that and developing curriculum maps and formative and summative assessments that that will be um district-wide, so doing that work, and and that's going to be a big chunk. And then continuing to work on our strategic plan, we're very close to finishing that. Um but finalizing that, implementing that, and then monitoring that, and it with, again, with a focus on instruction. So I would uh like for you all to approve, need to move forward in focusing on these areas.
I'm I'm in favor and and this is good, but I want to ask a a question for with this, and look, you know, we had this conversation in the evaluation process, and each district's supposed to have a an evaluation plan for the superintendent. And of course, in looking back over the years, the all I could find was what was written in the minute. Is there, is there no state-approved, because the state's supposed to approve, if we don't, if we don't adopt the one, the model from KSBA, which started the year I left in two thousand and twelve, I believe, that covers those standards, then we, at that time, from that time on, should have had a plan and approved the state, and I don't see anything in our policy that references that, but there's nothing there, so.
And I can only speak from experience as as a board member, and I'm not speaking as a superintendent, but we have always followed that KSBA policy of that certi- that certified plan for evaluating the superintendent. Um do you, do you remember that we we never, we never.
Since since that was introduced, we have always been followed by.
What, are we following, but it's, you know, if if we have got, what I'm after is if we adopt that, and that then that becomes the procedure.
I understand what you're saying.
And it's, and it's not that.
We have nothing in our policy that states that that is the way that we are going to go about the evaluation, so, okay, I understand what you're saying.
If you, if it's adopted, then that model from KSBA is the procedure, which is the the evaluation plan. And then, of course, if you download it, I mean, you you follow the process on that and don't have to. It's good, I mean, it's it's simple and and ought to be there and should, you know, I'd recommend that we get, that we get that from KSBA.
We need to probably do that, yes, so that that's in our policy, that we will use that that plan when we do our evalu- evaluation.
It is a model, and so certainly, I I feel like in the, in our September meeting, we can put that on the agenda to adopt the KSBA certifi- certified plan for superintendent evaluation.
And it's, and it's actually the procedure, you know, the policy's good, and it references this procedure, and the plan is, is actually the procedure.
Yes.
And it's, and it's, of course, since it's not there and it's pre-found, I mean, I think it's a.
Yeah, I I I don't feel like that they've already done all of that work in establishing that process. I don't feel like that there's any reason for us to do anything other than what KSBA BA has already established.
Well, that's what we've been, that's what we've been following anyway.
Yes, but we can add that on an official, official um vote to adopt that.
Well, I want to, first, before we vote for this, uh I would just like to thank you for your leadership. And uh your, I know it, leadership requires hard work, so I I appreciate you very much, Ms. Fallinger. And uh look forward to this school year, see what, see what's up your sleeve, as the old saying goes, so. With that being said, uh I guess we, do we approve that?
Yes.
We do approve this, so we need a motion to approve Ms. Fallinger's growth plan for this school year. All in favor? Okay, now, uh item six is review the superintendent's personnel action report. There was a lot on that, we had like eighteen pages, I felt like, or something.
Let me have a question, do we do an exit interview when people decide to leave our district?
Um not formal, but each principal does.
There just seems like several that have decided to move.
And they, and and without going into personnel, these these positions, at least the certified positions, I'm not speaking to the classified, but the certified positions, people have taken opportu- opportunities for leadership roles in other counties.
I just thought, found it interesting, because, you know, lots of places, we'll do an exit interview, just for guidance and direction, and why did you choose to leave, even for other opportunities, I'm just curious. I mean.
That would be a great human resource.
Very informative, yeah.
There you go, Carrie, wanted to focus on the.
And he, that would be something that I've heard as well, the number that it's well, and of course, the exit interview uh is grand. It's just something for someone to do, but I think it provides valuable information.
It's informative for, you know, everybody, yeah, to to help, to learn, to grow. You know, we hear, I guess, it's community members and school board members, some people, as to why. And it's mostly positive, like you said, it's it's growth, you know, movement. But it would just be nice to see if there's anything that can be, such as salary.
Yes, whatever it is, it makes, especially folks who've been around for a long time.
Exactly, that's what kind of raises my eye on some of this, yes.
And the, of course, the comments that you may have received, and I may have received as well, along with everybody.
Exactly, that's what kind of raises my, yeah.
All right, uh item seven is department reports, Mr. Ken, or we got him.
Yes, you you all requested last month to hear those, so they're prepared to share out.
So we've, um, every summer, uh bus drivers have to go through an eight-hour update training. Uh that's required of all drivers, mechanics, teachers, coaches, uh myself. Um so we started those last week, on Thursday, we've got another session scheduled this coming Thursday that'll get every driver uh hopefully covered uh for that. Uh we've got bus monitor trainings coming up as well the following week, as long as, in addition to some more train- trainings with uh drivers. Uh but just trying to get the school year going, trying to get all these routes figured out, all the pieces put together, you know, moving places around, you know, even this full-time sub-driver, you know, I, that, we're going to prove if I am able to hire somebody, they're going to be driving a regular route every single day. You know, that's just what their, what their positions want to be currently. Uh so I will add that in, but uh just trying to put the pieces together and and see where it all is at. You know, if we were starting school tomorrow, I'll be driving the full-time route, no doubt about it. Hopefully, the good thing, we're not start- starting school tomorrow, so I still got time to, you know, come up with some plans, but that's where we are.
Mr. Hopkins, I have a question about uh the bus maintenance. I know you had had some transition there, have you been able to complete all that you're, you normally do for the summer?
Oh, yeah, 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 we're we're good there. Um with, bus is not running up and down the roads every single day, you have that opportunity to, you know, fix some things that you maybe had kind of put off a little bit, and all inspections are up to date. I talked to a mechanic a couple of days ago, and he said, we're good shape, everything's been inspected, we're we're good to go. Uh we are, we are rotating guys in and out, you know, mechanics are uh, you know, they're they're exploring other opportunities as well. You know, I've had, I'm getting ready to probably hire my sixth mechanic in in four years. And there was probably a time where Rockcastle had about three mechanics in a twenty-plus-year period. You know, we just never had turnovers there, so um that's another challenge on top of everything else we're dealing with. But the, you know, garage is in good shape, we're in good shape, we've got good, good people there and hopefully getting ready to hire one more, will get us back to where we're where we're supposed to be at.
Yeah, all of your, all of your maintenance, they they can also, can they all drive buses also?
They, there's, that's the good part about hiring new mechanics, because you can make that clear upfront, that that is an expectation. Uh and and yes, like as of today, uh as of today, I've only got two mechanics there right now, one of which can drive, the other one is being trained to drive. The third one that I'll be hiring here in the hope for the next few days, they will understand that that's part of the responsibility. Yeah, part of the job.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My missy, I'll let her newsletter.
I'm working on it, my my skills are not as good as some, but uh we're working on it, appreciate it.
I am, so just, since I've been hired, and one of the first things that I was doing is just looking at caseloads, like for our special education teachers and our speech therapists just across the county, and kind of looking at that and seeing how to best utilize the staff that we have for that. And also, uh I was excited to hear about like the iReady diagnostic that we're going to be able to use this year, because I think that's going to be beneficial, especially for our special needs students, so we can see exactly what level they're on and kind of go from there, even developing their IEP and um just having, you know, instruction on their level, because it does kind of tailor to whatever level they're on, provide lessons for them on that, so I was excited to hear about that. And then we have um training coming up with Ms. Teresa Combs um for FERPA and confidentiality for all of our special education teachers, that's on August the seventeenth, and then also A R C chairperson training on that same day as well. Um and then with preschool, and I know our preschool teachers have been working to do complete screenings and um, you know, we're looking at numbers there for preschool as well, I've got the numbers there that we have so far. Um and these screenings just allow us to see potential delays for students and just help us to, you know, be able to provide those early interventions that they need, so.
Are you seeing an increase with those numbers versus prior to COVID, thought?
Um, you know, honestly, I don't know what the numbers were last year, I'd have to look at that to see if that's been an increase where I wasn't here. Uh the classrooms are filling up, and we have some that's that's getting pretty full, so um I mean, I think that's a positive thing, I'd like to see, you know, those students to be able to get in and get those interventions and things that they need, so.
What are your preschool numbers, did you have them?
There's, there's a chart on there. I think there's still some other screenings to to do, and like, you know, we always have meetings, like the first step students that come in, so there's still some other students out there that's probably not included in this yet, too.
And the screenings, I think, went pretty good.
Yeah, they went great.
So last year, where I was on, were the masks mandatory at that point for preschool? So what kind of challenges is that going to propose for a lot of our teachers and is there any info out there?
I think that will be difficult for three and four-year-olds, you know, kindergarten did not, was not required to wear a mask. So that's that's new for three, four, five-year-olds.
You know, they make pediatric disposable masks, and that might just be something to think about. So, because you're going to go through a lot of them with kindergarten and preschool kids.
We have some of the the those.
We have some.
That the state provided for us.
Provided um a supply of the the youth-sized masks.
Yeah, so it's going to be a challenge, I know that was one of the announcements.
I know when one of our speakers earlier, her little girl, the mask fell off of her.
Yeah, and they're hard if you have young kids.
She asked me about that.
They do not fit, yeah, they do not fit in child space, I was just curious.
This order will be interesting since it's two years up.
Yes, that is a change for us.
Two years and a half. As a parent, I would.
I'll have to say, as a medical provider, my two-year-old nephew, now three, has worn a mask the whole time, no problem. So it can be done. It's just a challenge, I thought it would be a challenge myself, but it it can be done. You know, it won't be a a horrible thing to do.
This is sort of off the rec, nothing off the record, but I forget that. I have a friend who uh who is a teacher and she teaches small children, and she said that she would like to uh put all of those masks in baggies so that they could be sent and um analyzed as how nasty, I mean, you can ask them to change the, um we're talking about the smaller children, you know, but um that was supposed to be off the record, Brandon, so.
Totally matches what the one parent had.
I mean, and and she she had said that, if whenever, I guess, she had watched the news today, you know, she, which, you know, it's different, I believe, as the adults, we see things differently than if you're with those very small children every day and you see, you know, they they don't know how to sit in their seat still for more than five minutes, so.
But we train them to, you know, they are multiple.
Yes.
And they are, they're kids or something, we know that, they're resilient.
Yeah.
I think it affects us as adults a lot more than it does them, because I know it has me.
Are we going to, like, I know that we're doing the two masks per student. Um maybe sending some education home with those masks on the importance of the washing of the mask every night, because like, we go some, like my household, we go somewhere, when we come in the back door, that is like our half-bath slash mudroom area, everybody just goes and throws their mask in the sink. And at the end of the day, I take antibacterial, so wash all that and they hang, we have a tie rack. But I think that maybe a lot of families don't do that, and they're wearing the mask continuously. I don't know if that's making, what she was talking about with the strep throat, with I think that probably increases those risks. Um so and I, maybe if we just send a little bit of education on the importance of them washing them daily.
Certainly, and as we, you know, we had, we had shared out our plan, our re-entry plan, and Ms. Jamie and I had spoke this afternoon, that tomorrow morning we'll come together and revise that based on the governor's mandate, and that would be a perfect spot that we could add some information, because we do mention the importance of hand washing and other protocols that that our students will be following, so we can add that to that.
And they're great masks, by the way, they wash well, I think, the ones that you all have chosen, they're very good masks.
Uh, you know, I I hate to be the one that's on the opposite end of the fence freeing up things, but uh do you think because of this new mask mandate that our virtual is going to go through the roof again? Okay, I I felt that way, too, the feedback that I'm getting.
I have to say, I'm thankful that the board approved our virtual option it made. I have to say, I'm thankful that the board approved our virtual option in May, because there's districts that are scrambling right now.
We've got something in place.
Because we've got something in place, and, you know, a lot, we, we got, as I was sitting here, I was looking at, we have, we've had more applications.
Well, I was, I was thinking that, when, when is gonna be your deadline now for that?
We talked about the first day of school. Of course, we'll, we'll, we'll continue that discussion. You know, this just happened today, and we know that's gonna be a need, we know that's gonna increase, but, um, is that on record? Yes, it is. We'll talk about that. I mean, we know that we're gonna have to, we know that we'll have families that this will be a, a concern. I said, child.
And, and again, the governor announced at four o'clock.
Sure.
So we'll come together as a staff tomorrow morning and, and reconvene and, and make adjustments. And, and again, just like we've been doing all through COVID, the key word's flexible.
Sure.
And, and that's what this staff is so great at, and we'll come together tomorrow and we'll adjust and, and we'll move forward.
What's the word for community, parents, teachers, staff, flexible? They all are happy.
I would like to welcome you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to be here.
So, um, I guess this is personal. So you're, you're from London, or?
I live in London, yes.
Okay.
And, um, I came from East Burnstead.
East Burnstead, sure.
I was director, especially there for four years, and then before that, I taught Knox County for fourteen years.
You don't look old enough. Well, welcome, and, um, you know, I'm gonna say this, uh, the longer you're here, the more you're gonna love Rock Castle, so, you know, um.
I can't say I disagree with that, but I'm.
You're just gonna find there's, the people here love just a little bit deeper, so, you know, welcome, and we, we're glad to have you, for sure. Mr. Marcus?
I have to say, I've enjoyed working with that, it's been awesome to get to know them, but didn't really know them, I guess, didn't know them at all. But it's been, it's been great to, to have them, have them with us. Um, as far, this is training season, you know, all of us are training every day. We're having trainings. We've got our teachers that, uh, that are coming, so as you can see, we're, we're all talking about trainings that we're doing. Um, I would like to mention in terms of school safety, uh, that's on my mind, been on my mind for the last couple of weeks. That's a, that's a major concern. As we come back, we're gonna have around four hundred students, you know, that are coming back for the first time since March eleventh, twenty twenty. Um, that is, that's a concern, and we want to help those students adjust. Um, but school safety's on my mind. Um, well, today, we did act the shooter training about Vernon, you know, nobody's, everybody's thinking masks, everybody's thinking instruction, which is great, but we gotta be thinking school safety. We've gotta be, we gotta get that in our mind for our students and our staff, because it is so important. That's something that I am very, very passionate about. I, 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 over the past year, I've learned a lot, and still I've got a lot to learn, but I do, that's something I've, I've, I've learned, appreciate the more I've learned. Um, I hope you notice our Mount Vernon Elementary School, the A T C, we got the new window graphics there, that's a safety feature, another barrier. Um, Ms. Ms. Jamie, um, did, did, did all, so she's great.
She designed them all.
Uh, she designed all that. She's wonderful, great, awesome. Uh, she helps me tremendously. Um, I'm not that, that good at all, great, too, but, but there, she does wonderful in all that, so, uh, that's a safety picture that, that we had done in June, July. Uh, we had today, Mr. Westcorn, effort, Kentucky Center for School Safety. Actually, he came on Friday and talked to our high school, middle school principals about threat assessments, how to handle when you get a threat. How do you determine if this is an actual, something that could be actionable, uh, something that's imminent, something that's not? And that was so, so valuable for our principals, because we have those situations, and, you know, we're not law enforcement officials. We, we don't have, we're teachers, you know, so we have to, we have to be in that mindset, and that training was so, so wonderful for our principals to go through. So I appreciate him coming to do that. He actually came today back and talked to our gatekeepers, our secretaries, our office staff about visitor protocol, what to do whenever visitors show up. And so this year, when you come to schools, and this has been, this is the law, you gotta show your I D. They're gonna have a script, they're gonna ask you to state your name. Please don't be offended if you go to the school, they did, they're doing the job, they're doing what we're asking them to do. Uh, matter of fact, we said today, doesn't matter who it is, you know, prominent people, you, whoever, uh, please go through, be consistent with everyone, no matter their appearance, no matter if you know it or not, be consistent, that consistent approach. So that was a very valuable training for our secretarial staff. Appreciate him coming to do that. Also tomorrow, we have, as part of our trauma plane safe crisis management training at Mount Vernon Elementary School, that's with Mr. Larry Lee, one of our employees, he does that for us. And so, uh, so that's, uh, that's something that select, not all staff are gonna do, that selective staff have been, uh, identified by principals, so they undergo that. Um, of course, all of our schools are gonna, gonna go after, after shooter training, and then, um, Ms. Angie Page is gonna do the trauma training with all of our staff this year for the first time as well. So, um, we, we believe that'll be beneficial. Um, our telehealth, as you all know, you, you proved, uh, that, uh, that contract with Rockpeas, or you've expanded that to the middle school. Did any of you guys see our infomercial that we did? Um, it was on, it's been on Facebook, it's on District Level, pay for, commercial. Ms. Rachel Johnson did that. She put that together. She's a teacher at the high school. She was a journalist before she became a teacher. She worked down, uh, at the London Sentinel Echo, and then she worked at, uh, W Y M T for a while.
Middle school for a while, didn't she?
She worked at middle school for a year. That's where, uh, I realized what, she, she's very talented. And she did, worked at Y M T for, W Y M T for years as well, so she's got a little bit of that TV background. She does a great job. You know, I was thinking, you're talking about masks, maybe we could get her to do an infomercial with the council.
Same thing, I wrote that down that.
Clean, get our students to do a video and let her film it, because I'm here to watch her for a job. She's really good at it, she enjoys it, but maybe we could do something like that. Folks will watch a video on Facebook, you know, that's thirty seconds or a minute, they won't read a piece of paper, but if you put that on there, that's our goal and that's our hope. And that was our, our aim with this little commercial we did, that's a polar commercial. People get that, tell them they don't know what that is, that why are you sending me a doctor's form home? So hopefully they can watch that, and it gives them information about the service that's offered there. Of course, that's voluntary, but we believe it's a great service and great partnership. Vaccine clinics, we partnered with Rock Castle Regional Rockpeas. We did a vaccine clinic back in May at the middle school. May, July thirtieth. Um, and that, I think we have thirty-six community members there in two-year period, uh, some students, some staff members. Uh, they're coming back on August twentieth to do that. We're also excited, we've arranged for Rockpeas to be at the middle school during open house nights. Of course, not only students, twelve of them both can get the vaccine, so those three nights, they're gonna be there as well. And we're working on the high school, it's a little more complicated because of their open house schedule. Uh, but we're working to hopefully maybe get something there too, to have that available for students uh, and staff if they would like to, um, come and get, get that vaccine during that time. Um, and then, of course, you mentioned the social emotional curriculum. Uh, we're very excited about that. I won't go back in, we can go about that. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jessica?
Um, so I'm under the impression you've heard a lot about the Project Lift Grant with literacy. Just to let you know, cohort two, the second year is underway. Last week, we had three days at the middle school with the adolescent literacy project, uh, where Dr. Dory Combs from Eastern came down and led some wonderful literacy trainings to teachers in all content areas so that they can take it back, and what's it like to be a, a scientist and read? What is it like to read as a mathematician and write as a mathematician? And also in literacy, and how to just apply those skills across all content le- levels and areas. This week today and tomorrow, the Kentucky Writing Project is going on, and it's being held at Mount Vernon Elementary School. And again, it's how to write with all grade levels, K through twelve, and different contents, and how to apply those writing skills in all different contents. Next week, um, Benchmark, the literacy program that was purchased back at the early part of the summer. Each elementary school will have their training on the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth on how to implement the literacy program in their classrooms. And for principals this year, we have partnered up with the Elgin Foundation so that our principals have a mentoring program, so they have somebody, an additional resource, of somebody to come in and talk to them and kind of shadow them for a little bit during the day, come to them with P L Cs, um, offer suggestions and ideas to help. And they can also tell them other schools to go to and shadow and go to for other ideas and suggestions, to kind of branch out and network for our principals, and that's just gonna be a great resource for them as well. The grant is for principals K through eight, but we're going to contract in and get our high school principal involved in that as well. They've got several other school districts that are doing that in southeast, south, central Kentucky, and it's only available in this little area. It's a great program. He came up and talked to us about the different programs and initiatives that the El, Elgin Foundation offers, and, um, it's a wonderful project that they, an initiative that they have going on. Um, Friday, we had our data released that the number of students who completed K prep assessment and the number, or the percentage of students that scored at novice apprentice proficient distinguished. And our counselors and backs are working this week to clean up rosters and make sure everybody's accounted for, that should be, and nobody's on there that shouldn't be. And then, um, today, actual student scores were released to myself and to the backs also, and so they're going through those and cleaning that up as well. So scores are starting to trickle in. We are not going to get an accountability score, just an assessment score this year. Just to know how many kids completed the assessment, and then what they would have scored, but we won't get an overall score for the district. iReady fall diagnostic window is set. It's actually gonna open the first day of school. Not many people will take it the first day of school, but it's open for about six weeks. That way, every school can go ahead and make a schedule that works for them, and they can get that done, so they can start their R T I programs and meet students where they are, and we can start growing our kids.
This may, um, this is a quick question. This may have been answered before, and I apologize. So the standards of Project Lift and the success, how is that monitored? And again, it's probably what's said earlier. How will we kind of score it, or how?
How do we, so.
Throughout the year?
Throughout the year. So teachers have logs that they fill out, and this year, they're required to have forty additional hours of professional development on literacy, the teachers that are participating. And they fill out logs that their principals and I are looking at, at how they are using the strategies that they've learned. Are they mentoring other teachers? Are they modeling, or are, are teachers going into other classrooms to observing different strategies and how to implement that?
How do we see how it's helping our kids, I guess, is the one.
We will go back and we'll use iReady diagnostic data to see, and then also teachers, at the end of the year, will do an assessment, and they'll do different surveys periodically throughout the year, and students will also do a survey. Um, are they starting to see these strategies in their classrooms also?
iReady, I guess, does have a writing component?
No, it does. It has a reading component.
Yeah, so I was wondering about like the, the writing component as well, if that's something that we are monitoring or judge.
It would be done through the student survey.
Okay.
Yeah.
And iReady has math as well, correct?
Reading and math.
Remind me, I've, yes, okay, thanks.
Uh, you had said that you were getting the, uh, so there's no, there's not gonna be any accountability. Will parents be notified of the scoring?
Yes.
Like, will they have been in the past?
But, yeah, they won't get a actual, this is, this is what your kid would have scored had we scored it this year.
Okay, sure, I was wondering if parents would.
It'll be October sometime. It should be about the same time it always, it's been out every year.
Yes, yes, yeah. Well, I'd like to welcome you also. Look forward to working with you.
I'm excited to be here, yes.
Ms. Jamie?
Um, last month, a request was made to make, take a look at our E S R funds, how much has been spent, and, um, just wanted to give you kind of an overview and to also revisit all of the funding that we've received, um, that has been COVID-related. Um, so we'll start with E S R two, and that's the funds that we're currently working with, uh, to support, um, student learning. Um, just kind of giving a snapshot of for last, the end of last school year. Um, kind of chunked out some of the things that we supported with those E S R funds. To date, as of seven thirty-one, we have spent a little over one point three million dollars, and, uh, those areas of support have included support for student learning, uh, providing the MyRock Online, uh, tutoring center. We provided summer school, um, at every school across the district, including staff, resources, and transportation, educational materials and resources. Um, an example would be the Benchmark, um, that was purchased, um, for, um, our schools. Another area, um, student technology and support, one of the largest areas that we have focused on with the federal funds that we have received. Uh, we became a one-to-one, uh, school district. Most of that came with our early funding. And, um, then, uh, Mr. Brandon ordered additional Chromebooks, uh, to support students for this school year. We had used some older Chromebooks that we had in the district to, uh, to survive that first year. So we are replacing some of those older, um, Chromebooks that are available to students. And, um, uh, I guess there will be more new in our pool. Is that correct? Um, and one of the anticipated, um, costs that I just like, pick me up off the floor. Um, Brandon brought in a request to purchase, and it was for replacement chargers for Chromebooks. Um, cannot stress enough, um, how we would like to appeal to parents and students to, um, take care of, you know, Chromebook chargers. They are expensive to replace. Um, we had a large number that we needed to replace that were not returned, um, from last school year, and to the tune of over sixteen thousand dollars. So it's very important that, um, that we take care of what we have available, so that we continue to provide them that year after year. Um, so that is very costly, and that was just for a small portion. Um, how many did we order? Two hundred and?
That was six hundred.
Okay, six hundred Chrome, Chromebook chargers that we needed to replace from last school year.
Six hundred in one year?
In one year, so.
If there's gonna be any type of accountability, like if we may replace one, but after one, then?
Who will be now?
I mean, there has to be some stopping point there.
Honestly, last year with COVID, it was like, here's your Chromebook. Oh, you broke it. Well, you're home. What else can I do? Here's another Chromebook, you know, that's all we can do. You lost your charger? Well, we gotta have school, you're not even here, so here's your charger. Uh, this year, it's, it's, it's hopefully gonna be a little different. Um, um, so we, we, they have a Chromebook agreement in their student handbook. Um, they're being told that we can't charge them for their charger. Um, if they lose their Chromebook, they're gonna be asked for a deposit, so we'll ask them to give us a deposit for lost. If it's stolen a few times, people have said they're stolen, and then a few times, about a couple of weeks later, they would just show back up, right? So they weren't stolen, so we're gonna ask them for a police report. You know, there's gonna be some real, some different, it's gonna be different this year. But, but they have to be told that upfront. Wasn't fair for us to start that middle of the year last year, because they weren't told that upfront, but going forward, they'll know that upfront.
And that's what they're supposed to sign. This, that was in the handbook that y'all approved last month, Chromebook user agreement form, all this is laid out. And so whenever they're issued a Chromebook, they'll have an app on one of them.
I mean, I think some districts are doing deposits, so we're lucky we, we don't have to resort to that yet, hopefully.
And hopefully, we can all work together and, and do lots of communication. Maybe we can do a video on taking care of Chromebooks. And Chromebook chargers. Um, COVID prevention and spread, um, Mr. Trent and his staff placed M R thirteen filters in all of our school buildings last year to help, uh, prevent and mitigate, uh, the spread of COVID nineteen. Um, any P P E that, um, that we don't have set aside in our, um, this is not including what we have set aside in our FEMA. Still hoping for that reimbursement, Mr. Hammond. Still waiting on that check to come. Um, but, you know, obviously, um, we will have to use some of these funds to take care of those purchases that we deem FEMA-eligible, should it not, um, not receive approval. Um, cleaning and supplies and materials, um, we had to utilize a great deal of, uh, resources last year to, um, mitigate the spread of COVID in our buildings and make sure that we're cleaning and sanitizing those high-touch areas. Um, responses to COVID included, um, substitutes costs, um, normally. You know, that was an expense that the district would not have normally received, um, an expenditure for. We were able to utilize these funds to cover COVID quarantine specifically. Um, monitors to assist with screening and, um, materials and supplies. So looking, so that's kind of where we were, and now where we're going. Um, on your second screen, um, let me make sure. One of the areas that we've been talking about is, uh, support for student learning. Um, the board approved, um, several positions over the course of the past several months, and those positions were filled, including three academic specialists, a school-based mental health advocate, and, um, the additional, the addition of a principal at the Rock Castle Academy to assist with virtual learning. All of those positions are for two years, and, um, you have the amount that, the, the cost for two years to support those, um, positions. Those funds are set aside to, and designated to support those positions for that period of two years. Uh, student technology and support, um, continuing to offer support to our parents and students uh, by offering tech, uh, tech helps, uh, um, staffing, and Brandon is, uh, works with that. And one of the things that we have done specifically in those areas, um, is working with, uh, young people, uh, maybe a co-op student. And, um, it's very important, we, we mentioned students in the course of our evening. It's very important that we continue to invest in the youth of our community, and that we mentor them, and, um, And, um, you know, I, I always kind of, I, I date myself a little bit, but, you know, two of our most valuable, um, employees in Rockcastle County Schools came to us as co-op students. And I think that that is something that Rockcastle County Schools can continue to invest in and develop. But Brandon and Jamie both started as co-op students whenever they were in high school. And, you know, had the opportunity to learn and grow with the school district. And, um, you know, I don't know what we would do without them. Um, so I, I encourage us to continue to keep that at the forefront of our considerations, um, in working with students and young youth in our community. And, and in a way to keep our, you know, grow our own and keep them in our community. Uh, COVID prevention and spread, um, the areas that we're working on. Uh, Mr. Trent is going to be purchasing some new equipment, uh, for each of our schools. Scrubbers and floor, um, equipment. And that money is set aside for that purpose. And again, materials and supplies. I'm going fast so that we can all go home. And I can't breathe behind this mic. Um, on your third slide, I just wanted to revisit the, uh, funds that we have received in Rockcastle County Schools. And, um, you know, we will always continue to be transparent and, uh, frugal with our funds. And at any point in time, I encourage, um, if there's someone in the community that has a questions, a question about funding, feel free to contact me directly. Um, I'll be glad to answer your questions, um, as board members. Each of you oftentimes have questions. And, um, we've talked through those and, um, you know, happy to provide any information requested. Uh, the recap of funds received, our Gears Funds. Um, that was part of our work early on, um, when we first found out that, uh, schools were shutting down back in March of twenty twenty. Um, you know, these funds, as we moved into summer, we began to talk about one-to-one, um, Chromebooks. And, you know, we've talked about one-to-one technology for years and we never thought that would be a realization for Rockcastle County Schools. And this gave us that opportunity. And I hope that we continue to work, um, on our sustainability plan. And Brandon has a really good plan in place. And, um, we just need to continue to commit the funds, um, on an ongoing basis to replace Chromebooks. You know, um, Brandon, you're looking at what grade levels?
Kindergarten fifth and then now.
So.
And that, and the reason we choose that is because we, we buy a three-year warranty. That makes the best use for warranty. Buy a three-year warranty, we have a device for four. Kindergarten lasts longer during kindergarten. Um, we know they won't use it as much. They're not gonna be as repurposed, believe it or not. Put it in the backpack, it stays there, um, fifth, fifth until eighth, you know, but you got a three-year warranty. So you got one year where we have to fix stuff. It's gonna save, it's gonna save us money. And then that through high school, by the time they get to high school, the devices, it's in the block by the time they graduate. So that's, that's our plan. It's still a lot of Chromebooks a year, you know? It's a, it's still gonna be a, it's still gonna be a hard plan to keep doing.
Brandon, I'm, I was gonna ask you earlier, what, what is the projected count annually?
I would, I mean, we would guess two hundred and twenty students per grade level. You're talking about three grade levels. So, so say six hundred, seven hundred kids, um, per year. That's a lot, um, three hundred to three fifty, um.
Six hundred?
Yeah.
So.
Do math, two hundred and ten thousand, really two hundred thousand. Um, but that's, it's important to remember that's just Chromebooks. There's a lot of pieces that we've also added.
Yeah.
Other than Chromebooks, you know, we have a piece of software, um, that, chargers, sixteen thousand dollars, right? We just talked about that. Um, we have a piece of software that lets teachers monitor student screens. Um, they can, um, they can black, blank the screens if they want, make kids stay on, send them a message. Um, they can even do that if they're at home, they can see that. So, you know, that's another sixty-five hundred dollars. I can't imagine being one-to-one as a teacher and not be able to see the student screening in your room. Um, so, so that's another important piece. There's, there's, it, it's a lot, Ms. Hammond, um, it's a lot. It's gonna be, it's gonna be hard.
And, and then something we can't lose sight of in the budget process, right?
So we have, we have already started our sustainability plan. And, um, the Chromebooks are certainly one piece of the puzzle. Um, the other piece that Mr. Brandon mentioned and that Ms. Jessica and I have al- already been working on, um, this week, actually yesterday, is inventorying, um, all of the new, um, materials that, uh, we are purchasing through these funds. And it will be very important for Rockcastle County Schools along with, you know, principals and teachers. You know, we have to monitor, um, you know, what we're using, what's working well? What do we need to change? You know, after we go through, uh, you know, we're going to recover from COVID. What are we going to keep? And what served us well for this period of time to address student loss, learning loss? And now we're going to move on to something else. But what will we keep in our tool, toolbox? So we have started that sustainability process. Um, that will be one of the key focuses, um, for Rockcastle County Schools to have a plan. Because in a couple of years, you know, there will be some things that we're doing now that will serve its purpose now, but that we will not be able to continue. Uh, there will just simply not be the funding available. Um, so we've already started that work. And we're going to have to be ahead of that cliff that comes in a few years. And, um, it's going to take us all working together, um, to make that plan a reality.
And, and as we, on that, of course, I made a note, not gonna mention the part about, uh, uh, those positions.
Yes.
The tenure positions. Two years roll around fairly quickly and, and of course, that's exactly what you're referencing there. And, uh, I'm sure that we, those folks are informed in the beginning, but we've talked about before. Uh, it makes no difference. The, the notice has to come in two years. Unless, unless we, uh, gain funding someplace that we're not looking at today.
And certainly there might, some of the, some of those positions are teachers that came out of the classroom to, um, as academic specialists to help serve the district, um, during this period of, of time, to be leaders in our schools. And we will be working, uh, to, uh, look at a position that might be open. Um, and we will have to work with them in particular to go back into the classrooms if they have tenure. So, um, that's something that, that will, um, you know, we'll have to have our eyes on well before the time comes. Um, our CARES S R one funds, you can kind of see again, that was all Chromebooks. It took almost those two pots of funds. It took all of those funds to get us to one-to-one. Our, um, S R two funds, you can see there how much money, um, we have allocated. And we've just talked about how much we've utilized, how much we have committed and how much we have left. Um, and then our S R three funds. And that is where, um, Ms. Ballinger has been working on developing that, that plan for our district. Twenty percent of those funds must be utilized for direct student learning. And, um, so tho- those plans are coming together. And then, you know, certainly, um, the discussion of a middle school, uh, that those funds would be part of that conversation for the future. So just wanted to kind of recap for you, kind of where we've been and where we're going. Um, and you can take a look back on, on those. But if you have specific questions, as we move along, we'll be talking more about S R three, um, in the months to come. Um, but you, as you can see, uh, the big portion of the S R two funds, either they've been utilized, we're currently utilizing to support student learning in this school year. And then we have a portion that's yet to be committed. Um, but we're tracking that very closely. Do you have any questions about those funds?
That was very helpful.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Jamie. Ms. Jamie?
Um, last month, uh, Wednesday, after the board meeting, we started our bulk, um, meal services. It was something new for us. I, and then I was a little bit scared about people showing up and whether we'd be able to get all that food out of the way for the next week's delivery. And then I showed up at Mount Vernon Elementary about ten till and found out that the traffic was lined up to save a lot. So needless to say, it was really successful all three weeks. The first week we actually ran out and we had to kind of put a limit per car. Um, but every week after that, we were able to serve every family. So that was, it was really successful. Um, we already kind of talked about the need for substitute cooks. If you know anybody that's willing to be a sub, please send them our way. Um, we did start our professional development yesterday. The biggest training we have going right now in food service was that the state has provided a new point-of-sale. So that saved us about ten thousand dollars a year. We were, um, previously using IC. Um, but the state wanted to get more districts using the same program. So we started our training for that yesterday and had that today. So there might be a few bumps in the road beginning of the year with, with the new program. But so far it's smooth thanks to Brandon's help. He's been a tremendous help. And then, um, a question we still get pretty often is about P E V T. And as far as we know right now, there'll be, um, one more issue round for the summer. And that'll be three hundred and seventy-five dollars to every student that was enrolled as of last school year. And that will be deposited on cards between August twenty-third and August twenty-seventh.
I think that amount is even gonna go to, uh, thank your children. So it's not just gonna be school and children.
I, I did, I think that's right, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, so. There's other kids that are wanting, yes. So some of those zero to five-year-olds will be in on that also. Good thing. It's a very big blessing, yes. That's a lot. I should be thankful for.
Mr. Brandon?
Um, so we submitted a, uh, a, an application for the, for something called the Emergency Connectivity Fund. We've done that for hotspots. So right now we don't have any hotspots. We had hotspots last year. We've submitted that. The deadline to submit that is this coming Friday. We've already submitted it, so we haven't heard if we received it yet. Uh, we hope, we hope to, if we do, then we'll have hotspots available for students that have that need, the need for internet in their homes. So we know that that's valuable, even if, whether they're at school or if they're at home, it's still valuable to have that resource. And also we, we've applied for that. Um, that'll be quite a bit of money and it will, it will, it would provide, there was no match. A hundred percent funding is what we applied for, so we're hoping to get that because of the cost, of course. And it'll blow up our students a lot. Um, other things, I haven't talked for a while, so I'll talk about some projects we've done this year. I'll try to be quick too. Um, but, um, we've replaced all, uh, we've replaced the, the main teacher presentation desktop in each elementary school classroom. So we've done that and monitors. Um, we've replaced each teacher desktop in the middle school, um, as well. And we've, and we, we did replace the high school desktops because they've been replaced recently. But we, we upgraded them, we gave them a solid-state hard drive, which will make their computer run much, much, much faster. So a solid-state hard drive is just a flash drive. Doesn't have moving parts, so it's a computer chip that makes it a lot faster. So we did that at the high school, which will help them. Um, so we, we talked about Chromebooks. We've added, we, we bought our next year's round of Chromebooks right for kindergarten, um, for kindergarten fifth and now. We've taken our fifth, the, the ones, the fifth grade for last year because of the warranty. We've taken those fifth graders and we gave them to have, half of those went to the sophomores. Our sophomores had older devices before. So last year seniors also had older devices. So half the sen-, half the sophomores will get, will get not new devices, but one-year-old devices that we purchased last year. And we did that to, to help that warranty, you know, push that warranty and take advantage of it as long as we can. Um, so we've got, we're scanning Chromebooks now. We're about ready for that. The first open house is next Thursday at Roundstone. That's the first one that's my, that's our, kind of our deadline. We have to have them done to make sure that they're open house. Um, but parents will give those out during those students' open house. So we'll have those there and ready and they'll all have a charger. Um, so, so and we hope, so I, I talked with, um.
If I get hung with them.
If they don't, yeah. I, I talked with teachers today. I always talk, I do before schools, talk, talk to teachers. Um, I talked with Mount Vernon Elementary today. Um, so we talked about that. We talked about charger, we talked about that cost. Um, I told them to stress that to parents during their open houses. Of course, I can't talk to all those parents, but we, we, they're gonna stress that with those parents. Um, they're also gonna talk. I talked to teachers about talking to students about digital citizenship. Last year, again, it was kind of like, here's your Chromebook. Um, but, so we're wanting to do better with some digital citizenship training. For sure this year, we've always kind of done that. It's different when you're one-to-one than when you're just using a computer in the lab. It's different when the kids take the Chromebooks home, right? It's different. So, um, teachers are gonna offer that and we'll bring them some, some resources so they can talk about digital citizenship, what that means, being responsible, not searching for bad things, not, you know, whatever, uh, doing, doing the right thing. Um, um, so other things we had, we talked about, um, we have a new website that's gonna be ready soon. Um, so we don't know if that'll be ready by the time school starts, but it'll be, it'll be soon. Um, and then, um, we are purchasing iExcel as well. It's a piece of software we had a few years ago. It was really good. Um, so we're looking at that now, so we hope to purchase that and roll that out this school year too. Um, it's another, it's a math reading, um, program that will help everybody. There's also a social system component, a science component for grades two through eight. So we're looking at that. That's something that I really like. I've, 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 um, we had it a long time ago. It was really good. I've paid for it for my kids for a while now because I like it that good that I pay for it myself. So, uh, it's, it's, it's really good. So we're looking at that, we're adding that now. Also getting other instructional systems ready, like I, I ready is ready to go. Um, or it's already ready, new kids are in old. Um, it'll, it'll update as kids are putting homeworks into the campus. It's all completely done, but I ready will be ready to go when school starts. And all other instructional system will too, like T Core especially program. So working to get all those rolled over to the new year. Still, that's a lot of work. We're, been working with the mosaic program, which is the new food service program. So hopefully we'll be ready to serve lunch too on the first day. Um, I talked about Classroom Relay. We piloted that last year at the end of the year. Classroom Relay is the piece of software where, um, teachers are able to view students' Chromebook screens. So that was a huge problem when we first went because, you know, even if you're sitting in the room, you know, I can't see what, what Ms. Grace is doing on her Chromebook. And that's a problem for a teacher. I trust her, but that's a problem for a teacher in the classroom. Um, so know that. Um, we also have the ability, we'll promote that when school starts for teachers to receive that weekly email, um, about their students' internet activity. Um, and then also we'll know, we'll know as well that as far as the mental health aspects go, um, NG Payne will receive a notification if a student searches for something. That would be a tr- a trigger toward something to do with mental health. So we monitor that as well. There's a lot, lot of that. Um, lots of changes, um, always lots of changes. But we'll have Chromebooks ready hopefully soon and we'll be ready to go. Got any questions?
Mr. Brandon, I had a couple of questions. Uh, the first one, which I know we have insurance on these Chromebooks, but, uh, how many of our Chromebooks came back?
Ten percent.
Ten percent came back destroyed?
Um, ten, ten percent, and maybe not destroyed. Yeah, I can't say that's destroyed. Ten percent had, had a problem. Um, so that might just mean, um, um, and that, that's what we're counting on now. But that's what we, we, we looked at that, we analyzed those numbers, over three hundred, which is a lot when you're talking about a hundred and eighty-five days of school. It keeps us hopping, right? Um, it doesn't mean they threw it against the floor, you know? One student, um, we kind of, one student was really on purpose and we, um, dealt with the police with it, okay? Only one Chromebook. Um, some, you know, but, but Chromebooks just stop working, just like emails to computers. Uh, kids put them in their backpack and they expose them and mess up the screen. Lots of times screens are messed up, but, but ten percent. So roughly three hundred, uh, had a problem at, well, roughly three hundred out of our, you know, uh, twenty-seven hundred enrollment, I guess. Um, but, so it's a little bit, little bit more than ten percent. But, um, yeah, that, that's what we're counting on. So, y'all, we, we don't, it's not an insurance, it's an accidental damage warranty.
Okay.
Um, so it covers everything. And, you know, it's, it's hard to, of course, it's accidental damage, you know? But most of the time they can't prove that it's not accidental, you know, unless they just destroy it on purpose. Um, so, um, yeah, that's what we're counting on. It's a, it's a, it's a lot of, it's a, it's a lot of work. Um, we're, something else, we're, she talked about young people. Um, but I'm gonna have a couple of co-op students starting. We're gonna have a help desk, just like we did last year. Uh, Darby Smith is gonna work at night, um, answering the phone for us until eight o'clock. She's gonna help us with the help desk. Another student, Gary Ramsey, is gonna work in the, in the, as a co-op student from the vocational school, um, in the mornings from eight to ten, thirteen, ten something. Um, um, so I've got him, um, gonna help too. So that's great. I've got Dawson Massey a couple of days a week, who's great. Now I've got Jamison Roberts as well. I think she's gonna leave me maybe for another job soon. Um, and then, and then we have Kayla Adams, who's a, who's a full-time employee that we hired last year. Um, because we, we, we have, obviously we have that need, a lot of things have changed with technology. Um, Ms. Jamie mentioned she has been most of her money. Yeah.
Glad you all have a good working relationship. I, I guess I had a comment. This really isn't a question. Uh, I noticed you was talking about chargers. This is just a thought. Uh, my daughter, uh, children are notorious for just throwing things in a bag. And I was fearful that her charger would get destroyed that way. So I went and got a bag and that was her charger bag. So I know that sounds kind of crazy, but I felt like when we returned it at the end of the year, her charger looked just as good as the day we got it. So that might be something that we could spend a little funds on to, especially the smaller children that they, you know, this is your charger bag, so you put it back in there and it protects it a little bit. So that's just a thought.
The chargers actually have, they're actually covered under the accidental damage warranty. So, you know, lots of times it's, which is strange, but, uh, you know, somebody's dog will chew their charger, but they'll throw it away, you know?
That happens every time.
If they would give it back to me, then I could get it replaced for free. Instead, they throw it away. It happens often. So that's part of what I hope teachers share with students, you know, if, if it's broken, bring it back to us, because it is covered. Now, the, these, the six hundred that I bought are not, you know, they're as cheap as I can find them anywhere, and that's what they are. Um, but when we buy a Chromebook from Dell, it's covered. The charger's not covered. The Chromebook's covered, but the charger's part of the Chromebook, so it's covered. Right? We just attach it to a Chromebook, and it's good.
It may be something that we wanna think about. I mean, if, if we had the extra funds.
We talked, we talked about, you know, early on, we talked about cases for Chromebooks as well. Do we do that or not? We opted for the accidental damage warranty, because even with the case, they're gonna be damaged. I mean, that's kinda how, that was kinda how I thought, oh, wait, no, we'll just get this accidental damage warranty. It'll, it'll be better than a case, because it's, it's roughly the same cost, um, you know, but, um, right, I, you're right. I mean, anything, sometimes, um, sometimes Chromebooks will be locked, be locked for weeks, and then the parent would just tell me, oh, it was in our floorboard of her car. So I know sometimes.
Well, and children also, the smaller ones, you know, uh, what their teacher says is golden. So, you know, if a teacher tells them, "Little Billy, you need to put your charger in this bag every time after you get done using it," he's more likely to listen to that teacher than he even will mom and dad sometimes. I mean, I hate to say it like that, but... And for those students, they may not have any guidance from mom and dad anyway, so. Thank you, Brandon. You've been busy a little bit, haven't you? Did you have any questions up there? Did you have any, okay. I thought you was, you was looking at him like maybe you had a question for us.
No, he said busy.
Mr. Cook, did you have anything that you would like to say?
Well, if you're gonna give me the opportunity, yeah. I'll stand up, so everybody can see me. Uh, we are, are absolutely ready for students to come back to the building. Uh, our staff has already been working on, uh, professional development requirements, uh, from the state level, and then, uh, been working on, uh, some things with, uh, trauma-informed teaching and, and, uh, you know, so we can try to address the, the whole child as, as they come back in. Uh, I would like to say that I understand virtual attendance will go up in the coming days and weeks. But it is critical for our school, for our programs, that we try to convince even those students who may sign up for the digital platform to still come to our building and take our programs. You know, we, we had learning loss for sure in our welding, automotive, electricity, health science, uh, business technology programs last year, uh, especially among the seniors. You know, our senior students are in our building almost three hours a day. And when they didn't show up to our building, you put two and two together. It's a lot of learning loss. As a result of that, our industry certification, uh, pass rate went down a little bit this past year. No, no surprise there. They're not coming in the building to practice. They're not gonna pass an industry certification test. Some of which wouldn't even come into the building to take the industry certification test that was offered for free. So as, as all of you all have an opportunity to talk to these, these students, as, as we will do as well, these students, these parents, these caregivers, you know, if they're signed up for our programs, please try to encourage them to, to do that, because we're more than willing to let them come to our campus and, and take part in those programs. Uh, and it's vital for our program's survival. Uh, I don't know how many are aware of this, but our programs operate under a system where they have to maintain a, a student-to-teacher ratio of twelve point five to one. If they drop below that, the program gets flagged. And if it's not corrected in a given amount of time, that program is closed, and that teacher is let go. And those programs never come back. So it may sound selfish, but I think most people want our county to continue to have, to be able to offer welding, automotive, technology, health science program. And some, and our programs are strong, but there's times as the population, uh, as we've seen a slight decline, where some of our programs do struggle at some levels to, to, uh, keep that level, you know, keep that twelve point five. And, uh, that's, that's just part of the whole big picture there. We need, we need the students, one, to train them and make them, uh, productive citizens. And two, we need, we need the students to maintain our, our programs. We have to have the pro, have to have the students. We can't operate programs on five, six students coming in at a time, so. Uh, but I, I'm hopeful that, uh, we'll be, we'll be able to maintain, uh, these, you know, the numbers that we need, and then more importantly, get those students in the building and give them the training they need so we can help them get a job, help them, uh, to, to get a career. And, uh, and I appreciate the work that's, I mean, I know many of you are already aware of that. We've had these conversations, but I wanted to make sure that, that, uh, the board understood those, those concerns, too.
I probably, uh, I apologize. I probably didn't really think about that. Uh, so really, you're, you're stating that if, if we have a, a student that's doing all virtual, they can, they can still come into your building to do the hands-on experience for that class. Okay. All right. I, I, I didn't even think about that, and I apologize.
And we had, we had quite a few last year that, uh, especially among the junior and senior level that did do that. They were virtual, but they would, uh, either, you know, a parent would bring them, or they would drive themselves if they, if they had their license already, and they would come in and, and participate in the class. And of course, those students obviously were, were more successful, so.
It's tough to teach welding, uh, personally, yes.
Yes, there is. You know, again, I'm a, I'm a welder by trade, and, uh, there's, there's no substitution for being in a boot with a real welder, on real steel with a, you know, running a bead, so.
And don't, and sure, but those, those slots, you know, we've got a big space out there. You, or you have a big space in that building, you know, that we had funding for another program that we could never obtain the slot.
Yes, sir.
And if you, if we lose those slots, they won't be coming back either.
No, sir, they don't. That's, that's the scary thing. And, and it, if condi, and I don't wanna be doom and gloom, but, but if the conditions hit just right, you know, that could happen. I hope it doesn't happen. I don't expect it to happen.
Right.
But again, in being just completely transparent about the concerns that we have, uh, even among the, the other fifty ATCs across the state, I mean, that's, that's a common concern. But that's, that's all I'd, I'd have to say there. But we are looking forward to getting them back in. The teachers are ready to get them back in the, the lab setting just as quick as they can get them orientated and, and get them through the safety material. And, uh, you know, we'll make up, we can make up for the learning losses, just because of the time that we have. We'll just be more efficient in, in their lifetime and how we teach. But we, we gotta, you know, if we get them there, we can, we can make that for a lot of time, for sure. For those that we still have.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Uh, next we have our superintendent's communication. Ms. Carrie?
Um, I just wanted to briefly comment, um, basically to our families and, and to our community, community that, you know, the governor this afternoon at, at four o'clock did mandate that masks were, um, going to be a requirement for all schools across the state of Kentucky. Um, Rockcastle County Schools had already, um, had already put out our Rocket Recovery Plan, giving that an opt, providing that option for students. We will go back and revise this plan, and we will be re, re-releasing something tomorrow to our community. Um, I just wanna reiterate how important it is for our students to come to school in person. You know, it, if we've learned nothing else through COVID this year, we've learned how important student relationships are and teacher to students, and having those students in front of a, a caring teacher who is going to have high expectations of learning for that student. And I just want to reiterate that, and that's what we've learned. If we've learned nothing else from COVID, how important a classroom teacher is. So I just want to encourage, you know, encourage flexibility. This is a difficult time for all of us. It's difficult for staff. It's difficult for families. It's difficult for students. But this is not gonna last forever. And if we can just remain flexible a, and, and giving to our teachers that opportunity to do what they do best. You know, we've got fabulous teachers in Rockcastle County, fabulous administrators, you know, fabulous support staff, bus drivers, food service, everybody across the board. We're truly, truly blessed. I just wanna reiterate how important it is for us to send our kids to school and for us to have those opportunities for that relationship building. Again, tomorrow, we'll, we'll put this back out to our community and to our families with some modifications, um, including the, the mandate of the mask. But just, just as we're, as we go through the next, next several weeks and getting ready to start school back, I just, I just wanted to remind everybody how important it is to be respectful of different people's opinions and respectful of, of the values that, that may be differing. You know, this is a very, um, difficult situation. Just to remember to be respectful of each other and, and your differing beliefs and, and how important it is to have our kids back in school.
Ms. Carrie, I have a question. Um, did he, I didn't watch the news. Did he say anything about, is there any guidelines concerning temp checks? You know, I know last year when we did the drop-off, they checked, that's not gonna be anything that we do this year.
At, as of this point, no. Um, the only, um, information that we have received to this point is that the executive order went into four o'clock today, at, into effect at four o'clock today, and that that would just be the mask mandate. Um, I'm sure we'll receive some further information tomorrow from K D E. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrie.
All right. Uh, board comments. Mr. Hammond?
I've got some comments.
You start on the other end?
Well, I can start. I mean, I'll, of course, I'll refer to, uh, I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Uh, of course, I'll start with the one that we left with last month, uh, Ms. Lake. And ask her a question to present what you'd like for me to explain.
I'm sorry?
Present what you would like for me to explain about my service.
Okay. Um, there were just community members that, um, felt unaware that you were not actually residing in the county, you know, when you ran. Um, the attorney, you know, everybody's watched the news, and it was with the Attorney General. You know, with you being a superintendent in another county and serving here, uh, just residing here. Um, I haven't heard anything from the Attorney General. I don't know if that has, have you got anything, Ms. Ballinger? Or, okay. Um, so I just felt like they needed an explanation, um, from you, or if you had an update, or any, it just hadn't been discussed in a board meeting or anything like that. And there's questions in the community that, and I felt like you could address that.
Sure. More than glad to. Um, of course, I started out day one and brought you all some information, uh, the first meeting. And then afterward, uh, and I think I gave you a copy, and I would, uh, suggest that you refer back to it, because it's all the correspondence being, that went back and forth between the Attorney General, other folks, me, emails with the department, and you have a copy of that.
I do. I.
And then.
You said that we were supportive, and there wasn't an issue, but there was.
Furthermore, uh, you know, you had consulted the board attorney. Uh, you referenced it last month. And I would suggest maybe you share that with the board attorney and get some clarity there, because.
This isn't about me. This is about the community members.
Well, you can explain it, or they can be listening, okay? Because in that, I explained that the Attorney General's opinion was relative to one district, one county, and both these districts were in the same county. We've talked about this more than once. And in that, I'm gonna close that with that, other than it reminds me, this whole conversation reminds me of a T-shirt thus, that a board member wore and what was on it. And that, and this is not too nice, but it said, "I can explain it to you, but I cannot understand it for you." What I'm saying is, the response was given to the Attorney General, and the Attorney General has done nothing in it. So I would say that there's nothing there, because the conflict was within the same county. Now, that's about as good as I can explain it to you, and if you can't explain it to others, then you might get the attorney to.
Well, I'm very well aware of how to understand things. So when, um, so last year, or now, when you, when you began, your comment, when this was a concern with you not residing in the county, your conversation to me, that was just me and you. You said, "Ms. Lake, you don't have to worry about it much longer. I'll be leaving Gallatin County." So I just kinda left it as is. You had stated that the Attorney General's office, um, that that was just an opinion, the statute, you know, that we brought. But it's an important opinion, and we haven't heard an answer from the Attorney General. So hopefully, we will hear that soon. However, when we went to, just a few months ago in May, so everything has kind of been, you know, just riding it out, but in May, at our training for school, uh, school board members.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. In the ethical class on the screen, it stated it was unethical for a superintendent of another district to serve as a board member. So that is when we brought this back up. That is when, kinda the same time, probably when the news come out with all of that. So it's an issue. That's the only reason why. It's not that I don't understand anything. It's an issue, and it needs to be addressed.
At the last K S B A session that I attended, I attended an ethics session, and we talked about that very thing. And in that, we discussed, and I, I told them what I was doing. I told them where I was with this issue. And I really think that anyone that can reason knows that it was relative to this, two districts being in the same county. That's pretty simple to me. And, and that was in a, that was in a K, that was in a K S B A training. That was in a K S B A training.
Well, you've never, you've never said that to us, and we brought that up several times.
Do I need to say anything other than what I told you?
I think you need to address the community's concern that you're not living here and you're serving here. You know, you, you didn't get to make it to graduation. You've not got to be at some of those strategic planning meetings. Like, I just think that it's not me. You need to address the community of, hey, this is why I'm here. This is what is going on.
Ms. Lake, I tell you what. If you want to do something about my service, pursue it.
What is that? Is that like a?
I'm, I'm here. I was elected by the people.
They thought you resided here.
Well, first of all, I'm just gonna cut this conversation just a little bit short here. Um, whether or not you live here, uh, that's not something I can prove, and I don't know that anybody on this board could prove that. We all can, we can all speculate, but, um, if we wanna sit here and pick apart whether or not any of us should be serving on this board, we would all find reasons against probably any of us serving. Uh, that's not what we're here to. I agree with you. I wanted to know what the Attorney General's opinion was. Uh, I felt like we were entitled as fellow, you know, board members for that, um, for that understanding, because we are in a working situation. Uh, so you are telling us at this point that they just gave their opinion. What, the last correspondence is what you have already gave to us. Is that?
And the way that works, and, and I would assume that the board attorney could tell you this. As we've talked about, Attorney General's opinions are specific to the, to the issues that are presented at that time. And that's it. You know, when, when things are reported to the Attorney General, they respond, the, excuse me, the Attorney General responds, but they do not. They, you know, this could sit there forever. I mean, there's no, I mean, if you were expecting a response, that may never happen, okay? So in the absence of the response, the response is, "I'm here to serve."
The Attorney General does not have to notify us of his opinion for him.
That was a statement somewhere, that they would notify the superintendent.
Um, I've never thought that. I mean, I was, I asked one time, because we had a similar situation in the past, you know, that we had asked for the opinion. And, um, at that time, the superintendent had not been notified of any time, because I had it.
I talked to the attorney at the Attorney General's office when it wa, and it was gonna be in discussion, and then they would let the superintendent know, they would notify the email. I talked to them myself.
I guess, and another thing to think about, and you all correct me. I guess what we're, you gotta look at it two ways. Maybe what's considered ethical or unethical. However, may not be illegal. It may not be a rule that's set there. Does that make sense? So even though it was in an ethics, so what might be considered that or unethical may not be a law or an.
And as far as the K S B A training, like I said, I brought it out in the training. I brought it out in the ethics class. I brought it out in the ethics class. I discussed it with the group, and there's a large group in there.
Unless we get something back changed.
I, I shared the, I shared the details of my experience here, as I do with other districts.
So that may need to be struck from their training, sounds like.
Well, that, that's really, that's really the, that's really the reason I brought it up because it is specific, and that very case has been, has been there for years, and everyone knows that. And I knew that that Attorney General.
What was the date on that, Mr. Hammond, on that case? It was like eighty-seventies, eighties?
Seventy-eight. And so that's been around a long time, and as far as it being removed, that was the reason I brought it up in the class. And of course, we talked about some of the details of it. But that, that Attorney General's opinion, like other Attorney General's opinion, applies to a specific set of circumstances.
Mr. Hammond, may I just say to you, and I think you know me well enough to say this, if at any time I feel like your service here is, uh, your job in Gallant County is making you make decisions that is wrongful for here, I will be the first person that will tell you, have my opinion about it. Are you surprised by that?
No, and, and you know, uh, when I stay back, it shouldn't surprise anybody here either.
I know, yeah. But I understand, Ms., we were under the assumption that we would get a letter, correct?
Yeah. And that's two other, that's two other things we're talking about, though. You're talking about residency.
Uh, yeah.
In this county.
Do you reside here?
And that would be an ethical decision for him to tell us.
That's what the community, I think, is asking. Do you reside here?
Yes, and what I want to tell you about residing, now, and, and of course, with, you know, you're not giving me on a trial here, but let me tell you this about.
I'm just telling you what the community wants to know.
Go back and talk to the community. What I would tell you is be like anyone else working someplace else. There, there have been people that worked in a community and lived in another for years on end. I have relatives have relatives that work away all week, maybe two weeks, and, but their home is in one location. So you call residency whatever you like.
I think it's called primary residency in the election. Um, so if your primary residency is here, we have nothing to dispute.
And that's, that's it.
And that's what it is, correct?
Absolutely.
Your primary residency is here.
That's it.
We don't have anything else, too.
No.
I mean, unfortunately, that's not the correct answer, but.
And in that, with concerns, though, I do have a concern that someone had shared with me. Of course, it came about from the first meeting. They, they were impressed, that you were impressed with Rockcastle County Schools, but they were concerned about a board member serving here while their kids went to a different district.
Oh, that's explainable.
I mean, it's, it's, that's perfectly legitimate, but I'm just telling you the concern, okay?
Do you need me to explain that?
Not for me. I just want to tell you the concern. But if you feel compelled to, go ahead.
Sure.
Wait, 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 but, uh, please explain that to him later, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
No, that's absolutely fine.
But I do not, I do not want to continue going down this route. And I apologize if that offends anybody, but we're going to.
No offense at all.
I think we need to put it to rest. Can we put it to rest, like, finality? Is that something we can do?
Done.
Um, it's picking a sore that we don't need to pick anymore. Last month was wonderful.
Yeah.
This one was wonderful up until now, and I would love to just put it to rest, if that's okay with everybody else.
I'm in total agreement with that.
We, it's out of our hands, and sometimes things come to light when they're supposed to.
That's like the other things. It's been sent up. If we get a response, that's great. If we don't, we kind of have to leave it.
There's a lot going on in this world that we don't really know about this anymore.
Mr. Hammond, you have other things that you had concerns about that you weren't.
I have one other, and again, this is, doesn't warrant a response, but it received some concern about the last meeting and the Zoom with a board member driving a car. And all I wanted to do was bring that to the attention of the group because of safety.
Yeah, but, and I can explain that. I had that just propped, on a thing on, like a holder on my dash. I was totally two hands. And alert, I probably, you could tell I wasn't looking at the, at the camera.
And, and again, I just want to share that because I, I do think, I do think that works.
I understand that because safety is number one. Um, so I understand that completely.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Hammond?
I think that's it.
Ms. Angie?
I just want to say that this is a great place to work. I know you all are working hard. Thank you. Um, and I love what you said about respecting, talking to parents, everybody. Respect others' beliefs. We don't agree on a lot. Some people have very passionate, um, for one way or the other, and I'm speaking right now to masking, to vaccination. But be respectful of others. I think that's very well put in your superintendent comment.
I think tonight was a perfect example of how that can be done.
Yeah, kids are resilient.
With our parents coming and our community members coming, and I just want to, again, thank, I know they've already exited, but just thank them for coming and sharing their opinions.
It's a lot to stand up in front of a group instead of just, you know, voicing opinion.
I think it gave a lot of different positions on it. It wasn't just one-sided. It was very.
And our children need to be in school. Like I said, we need to be in school. If it requires putting this on our faces, then that is more important than them sitting behind a screen if we can prevent that.
I warn them for.
So, yeah, please know that, please know that as parents, we're not out to get your kids. We want them to be safe. Um, and I want to again, say this again, focusing on excellence in academics and sports. Um, I think we still need to showcase that. School's coming up. I hope we continue to do, have that in our.
We'll have that on our agenda, maybe, once we get kids back in our building.
It's an encouragement to kids. I think to, right now, they need all the encouragement they can get. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, I just want to reiterate that I just felt like the public needed, it had never been discussed in a meeting. That's all that I was looking for him to address. Um, but I wanted to say that I, I was super excited when we were doing, um, Parents' Choice. I feel like that was, uh, very important. I think it's important for the community to know that the mandates are kind of out of our hands. I think sometimes they feel like we should do more, but it's, it's kind of out of our hands with the legal issues and things like that. Um, but man, it is important for those babies to be back in school. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. I know having to switch back and forth from everything, that's a lot. Um, but, but thank you for all your hard work, and at least the kids are going to get to go back to school. And above all, that's, that's the most important.
I just want to thank you all for all you do. Um, I know there is advantage in a lot of jobs of having a job from nine to five or a job from eight to four or whatever, and you all don't possess that. Um, you are kind of all hours, and, and there's not a lot of downtime and relaxing for you all, and I appreciate all of you do.
Okay.
Um, thanks to everybody. Um, I do appreciate your leadership, Ms. Carrie, what you're doing for our schools. I appreciate all of you all. Uh, I think I told the two, the two newbies that, you know, it's so good to see your faces and to have you here for Rockcastle. But for the folks that have been here for a long time, uh, you know, it doesn't, your hard work does not go unnoticed. And, um, I do appreciate you, and, and, uh, the, the public appreciates you. Uh, you probably don't get those words of encouragement as much as you are deserving of it. Uh, I will say that, uh, um, I would like, um, probably, if we can possibly do this. I know with COVID and all that, I think it would be very important, uh, to give an opportunity for us to do school visits during the school years again. Uh, we don't have to necessarily make it a special board meeting. I mean, it's like moving a regular meeting there because it's so lengthy. I don't think that we need to, uh, make our principals stay till ten o'clock while we go over things. But I, I would like to maybe incorporate at some point in time us going back to the school buildings and, um, and just, you know, doing that. We did that, I think, once before, and I really enjoyed that. And, um, the other thing I was going to say is I do, I appreciate all of you all, but I do appreciate all the board members. Uh, I think that, um, after we get past all of the negativity, I think that we are a group of people that can make really good decisions for our children. Uh, I think that you have, uh, Mr. Hammond's outnumbered. He's the only man on this board. Uh, and I'm, by saying that, I'm going to say this, us women get a little bit more compassionate when it comes to, you know, runny noses and, and I, I feel like sometimes. So that's when the knowledge that you have, the wisdom that you have through your work experience, I think could bring a lot to this board and opening our eyes and seeing things from a different perspective. And, um, I really think that if we all focus on kids and put any other thoughts aside, that we can wow what we can do. We can do great things for kids, and if ever our children needed us to make great strides in doing something good, it's right now. It, it's not going to be, uh, strides tomorrow. We need to make it a daily effort to move forward and to be encouraging. And, uh, my grandma always said, I'll leave this on this note, if you're not encouraging somebody, then you're discouraging them. So, um, think about that, and, uh, I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, 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 never mind.
Onto what you said, and, and I agree. Collectively, I think we're, we're about the right purpose. And, uh, what you said about, uh, if I'm letting something else interfere with my decision, I think that everyone here would know that, or ought to know, that my lifelong goal was not to be here. Every decision, everything that I promote here is about school business, and I, I equate school business to kids, and at the same time, tie it to the community. And I don't think that anyone will ever be able to say with a straight face that anything that I've done here has been contrary to the productivity of this school district because I have a lot of time invested. And the reason I want to say that was for these two new ladies, uh, you know, this is kind of a nuggly setting here on the tail end of this. At one time, I worked here for a while, and, uh, that's, that's part of the question about me serving on the board. But I want to welcome you too. I appreciate both of you. You've signed up for a tour of duty. I'll just leave it at that. But I appreciate your comments and that, what you shared, and what you'll do as you move forward, what you'll do for the kids. Motion to adjourn.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hammond. Need a second?
Yes.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have to say to turn me off.